I'd like to call the City of Sparks Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, May 17th. The order. Before we do the roll call, we are having a number of items that we may have some people interested in speaking tonight. By the way, thank you for all you for coming. Usually, we're speaking to an empty house, so it's a pleasure to have you all interested in what's going on. We would ask you, either before you speak or after you speak, to fill out these cards that Janet can give you at the end there. If you can do it before, it helps us just keep it in order and keep things moving. But we certainly won't keep you from speaking if you haven't filled it out, but if you could do that, it would be helpful. If you do come up to speak without having filled it out, please make sure at the end of your presentation that you talk to Janet and get a speaker form. Roll call.
Roll call. Commissioner Bowles?
Here.
Commissioner Spurber?
Here.
Commissioner Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Nowicki?
Here.
Mr. Hewens?
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Doug Thornter?
Here.
City Planner Armando Orvalo?
Here.
Thank you very much. Item three on the agenda is public comment. This is a period of time that anyone in the audience can speak for three minutes on any topic, either on or off the agenda. I will remind you that if you are here speaking on an item that is on the agenda and is a public hearing, that you will have an opportunity as part of that public hearing to have your three minutes. So don't feel like you need to speak now, and if you're willing to wait and speak your piece as part of the public hearing on the item that you're interested in. I believe we have one person who is interested in a public comment for sure on item three. Kathy, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst. I'm Marie Presley. John Danae Ramsey. John Steele. And I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, I just moved again, and this time I'm at the Virginian Hotel. And it's located on South Virginia Street. We have people who have escaped out of prisons and escaped out of jails. The problem is lying at the courthouse in Reno, Nevada. It is Trish, Julie, Misty, Maria, and three men. I just wanted to let you know, they are releasing them out of jail, they are releasing them out of prison. They are in prison for life. They are murderers. They have been murdering in this city. And the population in Reno is still going down because, remember, the population does not carry guns, and the only ones that carry guns are the ones on death row. There's also Mexico, the invasion, and I just wanted to let you know, Mexico's still coming across the border. Remember, these people are not human. They need body parts, they need human bodies, and they need human blood in order to stay alive. They are very, very old, old, old people. Anywhere from 1,000 years old, all the way up to AD and BC where they were born. And I just wanted to let you know, they cannot be here in the United States, and you know it too. They cannot afford to pay rent, they cannot afford to pay nothing. They cannot afford to pay for their clothes at the clothing stores, they cannot afford to pay shoes, they cannot afford to pay their own food, because, remember, they are not They do not have no money at all, so they will steal jobs and steal payroll checks in order to live in any area in the United States. We are getting a lot of people out of the United States, like Washington, Oregon, some from Utah, Winemucca, Nevada, Windover, Nevada, and California, and the whole state of California will be coming into our area because of what is going on. Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to participate in the initial public comment? If not, we'll go to item number four, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I think we have a couple of potential changes here.
That's right, I'm sorry.
Yes, can I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to change a little sequencing. Let's say eight, nine, 11, 12, and then do number 10, since it's probably going to take a little longer, and we'll get a couple of these items out of Basko.
Second.
I hear a motion from Commissioner Spurber, and a second from Commissioner Peterson, to change the agenda items and include eight, nine, 11, and 12, and then come back to 10. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, that's the agenda. Item number five, approval of minutes of the April 5th meeting.
Move to approve, I submit it.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Nowicki, and a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Announcements and committee reports? Mr. Armando?
Mr. Chell, we have none.
Any informational items?
No.
Let's move to the first public hearing item, which is PCN 12015. And I think... That's you, Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners for the record. Tim Thompson, senior planner. For you tonight is a request for a master plan amendment to remove the Eratsool East Area Plan from the City of Sparks' master plan. You may recall back at your April meeting that staff approached you about supporting this amendment, or sponsoring this amendment. The Eratsool East Area Plan was adopted back in 1998. The area plan encompassed the area east of Vista Boulevard, north of Disk, south of Los Altos. There's a small triangular piece of property. It was in the neighborhood of 40 acres. Trying to pull up a map here for you. Computer, please, Janet. There we go.
I don't think that is up on our screen. There we go. Thank you.
Essentially, the area in question is the commercial center here where Pinocchio's is located, as well as the mini storage located to the east, the Rock Church, the Imagination Station, the office piece up here to the north, which has an existing building that's been constructed for a number of years, and then there's several other undeveloped pads, no tenants on that property. The office project to the north of Basko there, the Truckee Meadows Water Authority pump facility, and then the Tanglewood subdivision. As I said, it was in the neighborhood of 40 acres. The area plan, or the intent of the area plan, was to try and control the development. I think the concern at the time was a big-box retailer. If you read the plan, that seemed to be one of the big concerns. And so the idea was to try and help guide and direct the development of this particular area, to try to minimize the impacts of a big-box retail-type use. Since the plan was adopted in 1998, it's actually been amended four times. Those amendments consisted of changing the allowable uses within the area plan, and... Let me talk about the area plan a little bit. The intent of the area plan is to better define how an area would be developed. Typically, you have land use as the base. It's very broad, it's a 50,000-foot level, and then you have your zoning on top of that, which is very specific and dictates the allowed uses and the development standards for the site. When you look at an area plan, the area plan really, I think, tends to focus on those specific development standards. And so in this particular case, although the zoning may have been office and allowed some of those office, or allowed office uses, the area plan actually restricted a number of the uses. So, for example, churches were in allowed use with the special use permit, so the Rock Church came in, they were established. They then had an interest in doing a school. They came in, asked for an amendment to the area plan to remove schools or to add schools as a permitted use, and then a special use permit was processed. And so those amendments, there were four, as I mentioned. It is staff's opinion today that the area plan has served its purpose. We believe that, and as I think everybody can tell, most of the area's been developed, with the exception of the office piece with the completed building and the vacant pads. It's been completed. I think the probability of there being a big-box retailer here is nonexistent at this point. And so staff is looking at removing this area plan. I think it's important to point out that as staff has worked towards the new comprehensive plan or the new master plan update, this was one of the area plans that we were considering removing anyway. I think it's, it could be appropriate to say that some of the property owners had been waiting for that comprehensive plan update so that they could take advantage of the fact that there was no area plan to restrict the number of uses. And so with your support back in April, staff has moved forward with this, and we are recommending that you, forward a recommendation, I'm sorry, we do recommend that you approve the master plan amendment to remove the area plan, and forward recommendation to the city council for certification of your request. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Tim?
I have one for Tim, real quick. Tim, you did hold a neighborhood meeting out there?
Yes, we did have a neighborhood meeting back on May 7th, so two Mondays ago.
And it was all positive?
Yeah, we had, oh, 10 or 12 folks that came out. We actually, I thought we had some really good discussion. I think that some of the concern is better addressed on the next item.
Right.
But as far as the removal of the area plan, I didn't hear any negative comments about the removal of the area plan itself, so...
All right, thank you, Tim.
Any other questions for Tim? Is the applicant or applicant's representative here?
Mr. Chair, the city is the applicant in this case.
Fine, thank you.
I am here.
Good, good.
Does the applicant wish to speak?
That's good.
Not to belabor it?
Please don't.
If not, I will entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, it is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? You have three minutes available to you. Come on down. Just a reminder, if you haven't completed a speaker card at the conclusion of your presentation, if you would stop by with Janet at the end of the line here and complete it, I'd appreciate it. Just have a seat right here, identify yourself, and you have three minutes.
My name is Bob Jensen. I am a resident of the Land District of Cary, Cary County, Cary County Development. And I lived there for nine years since its inception. I was at the meeting, and I think it's a foregone conclusion that the zoning will go through. Although I don't represent all of the people, I represent, I know a few of them who have some concerns about the effect of changing the zoning and the increase of businesses in that area. Not that we didn't know when we bought there. I mean, it was zoned for professional. Professional has the indication that it will be from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 at night, okay? That's the general perception. And I think that I would hope that the developer would have that in mind. I guess worst-case scenario would be that the development in there would be a fast-food place, a liquor store, or something like that, where the hours would be extended. Now, the problem occurs for the residents of Eratsool Drive, and I live right in the middle of it, is that when people would enter this area, as they do enter to go to the Rock Church, for them to go south on Vista, they do go out of the area, make right turn on Basko, make another right turn on Eratsool, and come down where there is an easier access to go south, okay? I use that example. The problem that I see is with the increase of children, with the increase of general vehicles on the street just because of the development, there is going to be an increase in the, I don't know how much, increase in the traffic in that area, and that concerns me. There are a lot of children in that area, you know, older people who are not as alert as they probably should be, but that is the concern. And I would urge you, as council members, to perhaps, well, not perhaps, to consult. I have several ideas. We discussed some of them, speed bumps and things like this to detour people from coming out of that development and making a thoroughfare to get back on Vista South. And I have a number of suggestions that's not probably appropriate now, but I would urge you to consider listening to mine and other people's suggestions as to what can be done to help our situation. I mean, we were aware of what could happen there, but now the possibilities are multiplied, and I would hope you take that into consideration. I don't know, you know, how that's done, or when that would be done, but it definitely should involve the developer, developer and the residents in that area.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Thank you. You may be in the stack and be called later to present again.
Don't call me.
Any other items, or any other public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the planning commission.
Mr. Chair, if I could interject here. In response to the comments, I think those comments are more specifically geared towards this next item. Again, this is simply a proposed master plan amendment to remove the area plan from the master plan document, and then associated with that is to change the land use designation for Imagination Station from childcare facility to office professional, and then to change the mini storage from the mini storage designation to general commercial. So that's all a part of this master plan amendment, and I think the next item, I'll be able to better address the comments.
Thank you, and the speakers, welcome to come back on the next item if you wish to restate your situation. I'll bring it back to the commission. Any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve Master Plan Amendment Resolution Number 193, and forward a request of certification to the city council for the master plan amendment associated with PCN 12015, adopting findings MP1 through MP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Lee, and a second by Commissioner Nowicki. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. We do have another item, PCN 12009, on the same general area.
Overhead, please, Janet. Thank you again, Mr. Chair, Tim Thompson, senior planner, for the record. This is a request from DDC2 LLC for a master plan amendment to change the land use designation on 3.37 acres from office professional to general commercial, and then also a rezoning request to change the zoning from PO, professional office, to C2, general commercial. Again, this property is located, or was formerly located, within the Eratsool East Area Plan. This is the last piece of the area that has yet to be fully developed. With the, there is, as I'm sure you're all aware, there is a building that's been constructed. It's been, it's been completed for a number of years now. It's been vacant, it's never had a tenant. According to the applicant, the struggle that they have are the uses that are permitted in the professional office district are so limited that any interest that they have had in the property, they've not been able to sign leases because that particular use is more commercial and not permitted in the professional office designation. With regard to the master plan amendment, when the city looks at these amendments, we rely on our land use plan and the locational criteria included within that land use plan and the master plan. Based on that, staff can conclude that general commercial land use is appropriate in this particular area and adjacent to the residential office uses that are in proximity to that. The rezoning, or the rezoning application, and when you rezone a property, the findings that you have to make really rely on the master plan and ensuring that whatever zoning is being asked for is consistent with whatever the master plan land use designation is. And so with the general commercial land use designation, the applicant in this case is asking for the C2 zoning and the zone change. I think it's appropriate to point out that while the C2 zoning may be consistent and appropriate according to the master plan and the land use designation, should it be approved, that the C2 does raise some concern. As the gentleman who spoke previously pointed out, there is a difference between office and commercial, just by nature of the uses. With regard to traffic, one of the discussions that was had at the neighborhood meeting was, when you look at traffic generation between office and commercial, particularly commercial of this nature, you don't see a substantial difference in the number of trips. What you see is a difference in when the traffic occurs. I would also point out that regardless of zoning, whether it's PO or C2, the city does not have any restrictions on hours of operation. So under the PO zoning, theoretically, you could have a medical clinic, or even a veterinary clinic for that matter, that's open 24 hours, entirely conceivable under the PO. When you talk about C2, the general commercial uses, they have a tendency to go beyond the hours of 8:00 to 5:00, where typical office uses generally operate. I think some of the concern that we heard were the potential for bars, for convenience stores, and so I think that it's important to discuss the impacts that the general commercial could possibly have on the adjacent residential. From staff's perspective, it's hard for us not to recommend approval for it, simply because as you look around the City of Sparks, it is not uncommon for there to be general commercial directly adjacent to residential. It's not uncommon. It happens. I can tell you that when you look at the city's design standards manual, whether it's commercial or office, in the design standards manual, it's considered to be non-residential. And when you talk about adjacency and buffers, the standards between residential and commercial and residential and office, they're essentially the same. And so based on that, staff is asking you to forward a recommendation of approval for that zone change as well. At the same time, I do think it's appropriate to have that discussion of the adjacency and the possible impacts, or the potential impacts, to some of those adjacent property owners. And at least be aware that there is a difference. There is a difference between the professional and the commercial uses, and there could be, or there is the potential for some greater impacts associated with that commercial use. However, again, when you look at the adjacency standards for residential to office and residential to commercial, the design standards manual, essentially the same. So again, staff is recommending that you approve the master plan amendment and forward that on to the city council for certification, and also forward a recommendation for approval of the rezone. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Tim? Now is the applicant available?
Yes. For the record, Chris Baker, here on behalf of the applicant. Tim did a great job summarizing the amendment request. A few things that I would just like to touch on. I think everyone's really aware of the property. The building was completed in around 2008, and, I mean, it's the definition of underutilized. You know, what we're looking to do in the basis for the amendment request is, we're really looking to add some flexibility to the property. You know, since 2008, they've had numerous, you know, applications, numerous interests in the building and the associated building pads, you know, some of those are parcels existing now. The buildings are designed, footprints are, you know, there, associated parkings complete, utilities are in, but without any tenants, there's really nowhere to go. So we're looking to get some flexibility so we can, you know, develop a very underutilized piece of property, an infill site, and finish off, you know, what was the Eratsool East Area Plan. Obviously, we do agree with staff's recommendation for approval, and I'll have the rest of my time for any questions you might have.
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Baker, you said you've had a lot of people look at the property. Just what are some of those businesses that have been interested that essentially decided not to?
You know, I think the applicant itself can probably touch a little bit more on that, but I do know of a few. You know, obviously, there's been numerous restaurant uses. You know, obviously, that's not allowed in the PO. Simple things like health clubs and other things that are appropriate in that existing building that are just not allowed in the PO. You know, I think Tim did touch on, you know, the fact that it might not be more trips. You know, I know traffic was a huge concern, just maybe a different allotment of times that the trips would occur. And, you know, realistically, hours of operation are things, these are kind of the main concerns. And, you know, Tim touched on, in the PO, you can have 24-hour use now with, you know, like a St. Mary's Urgent Care or something like that would be actually allowed in a lot of those PO zones. So, you know, if you're looking for more specific stuff, I can touch base with the applicant, we can touch on this.
Is that enough? Commissioner Hewens? Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? This is a public hearing item, and any member, any member of the public, would you like to feel comfortable with what you're saying?
I have a question, speaking on the turn. I realize I thought that that was my time. And once again, after listening, you know, Mr. Thompson and the applicant representative, I understand what's happening. I just urge, once that this goes through, that the residents are heard as to what can be done to alleviate the traffic, but because there's going to be more traffic, you know, that's inevitable. What can we do? We have suggestions to help with that traffic, but it's really impact that neighborhood. It's small, but a very, very congested area when you start talking about traffic coming up again, trying to get on sound.
Thank you. Your points were well made, and my guess is that they'll be heard. Anyone else like to comment in the public for up to three minutes? If not, I'll bring it back to the planning commission.
Mr. Chair, just to point out that Mr. Martini did attend the neighborhood meeting, and there was some discussion about the process for traffic calming, and so I do believe that those who were present did get a better understanding of the process to follow for traffic calming and the next step that they need to do. So just to throw that in there as well.
Thank you. I believe on this item that if we move forward with motions, that we'll need two separate motions voted on separately. So I'll entertain the motion if anyone is prepared to make it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm also happy to know that our traffic guy was there. That's good, John.
Very good.
I move to approve Master Plan Amendment Resolution Number 194, and forward a request of certification to the city council for the master plan amendment associated with PCN 12009, adopting findings MP1 through MP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson. We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson and a second by Commissioner Lean. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We have one more item to cover on this, and I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, I might as well. Mr. Chair, I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council to rezone 3.37 acres from professional office to C2 general commercial for PCN 12009, adopting findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Peterson and a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. We are passing over item 10, which we'll come back to as soon as we get through. We are moving to item number 11. Which is PCN 1102, I'm sorry, PCN 020, 12013. Karen.
Can you say?
No, no, it wasn't, obviously. There are some seats that have opened up, if folks that are here would like to sit. There's plenty, there is some room. Karen, are you ready?
Yeah. Good evening. Karen Melby for the record, senior planner. This item before you tonight is a special use permit to allow a convenience store with gasoline sales. They will operate on a 24-hour basis. They're on a site located of 1.17 acres in size within a zoning district of new urban development. I mean, district. And it's in the Marina Landing Plan Development. They are generally located at the southeast corner, southwest corner of, this is Prater and Marina Gateway. They're proposing to be in this location on the property. This is the site plan for the project. They are proposing a approximately 4,600 square foot convenience store, which would be this building, and then out here would be a gas canopy with five fueling pump stations. The location, the site is located in the Marina Landing Plan Development, which is a site designated within the handbook as for commercial uses. The proposed use is consistent with the plan development. It is proposed on the corner of two high-traffic-volume corner roadways and will serve the neighborhood. The staff addresses the three traffic-related issues in my staff report with conditions 3, 4, and 13. On Tuesday at the Planning Commission study session, staff provided an addendum to the staff report. And in that addendum, we addressed the architecture of the project. The architectural elevations were not included with the staff report because Maverick's architects were looking at revising the convenience store elevations. The Marina Landing Plan Development prohibits flat roofs, and Maverick has requested that the staff present the architectural elevations as submitted. The first set of elevations, this would be the front, which would be facing Prater Way. This is the, actually, the west side of the building, it would be facing the car wash. This is the rear elevation, be facing to the south, or the vacant land currently, and then this would be facing Marina Gateway. The last elevations are the gas canopy. The addendum outlines nine architectural standards in the plan development. The staff has issued, has issues with the use of the concrete block. I'll show you. They are proposing to put a screen wall here in the back of the building to screen their service mechanical areas for the operation of the, all the coolers and stuff in the building. Staff has issue with that they're proposing concrete block. The handbook says that it prohibits concrete block, either smooth or split face. Also, the screen wall does not comply with the architectural standards of articulation. And also, the last item that staff has issue with is that there should be no flat roofs. The proposed design is a flat roof with a parapet that has a decorative shed roof. This is a cross-section that was provided by the architect, which illustrates, this is the roof with the, basically a parapet with a shed roof coming off of the parapet. For some people, we call it a mansard roof.
Call it a what?
Mansard roof. There are two other projects that are currently developed within the Sparks Marina Landing Plan Development. The first one is the car wash, and you can see in these pictures that they have pitched roof along with a clear story. The other project that is developed right now is the Marina RV Park, and this has a pitched roof with a cupola, and then this is the restroom facility building, which is basically a hipped roof with a cupola. Both these illustrate, the photographs illustrate that have complied with the pitched roofs in the project, or the no-flat roof, as I should say. When Maverick amended the handbook recently, if they had had difficulty with the architecture, staff believes that they should have addressed the architectural standards at that time in the handbook. When the PD was adopted for a property, the standards in the handbook become the zoning code for that development site. So, not complying with the standards within the handbook is not complying with the zoning for the project, or the property. My medendum that I handed out on Tuesday addresses two options. The first option is if the planning commission agrees with staff and that the architecture does not comply with the handbook, staff is recommending 13 conditions, which, the condition nine requires that the applicant revise the architectural elevations to comply with the handbook standards. The section, second option that staff has offered is that a set of conditions that if the planning commission does agree that the elevations presented tonight does meet the intent of the handbook, we are proposing 12 conditions, taking out the architectural requirement of revising. Late yesterday, I received an email from Bill Mankey. He is the property owner and the developer of the Marina Landing Plan Development. I have provided each of you a copy of his email, but I will summarize it for the record. He states that he has reviewed the architectural drawings and fully supports the design of the roof lines. He goes on to state that it is a nice design with varied roof to keep it looking not like a flat roof. These design, this design is above the standards of the other Maverick stations, and he would welcome it to our land. That's a quote. He says he is out of town and asked me to relay this information to the planning commission tonight. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions by any planning commission members? Karen, explain to me if, what is the primary reason for the prohibition on flat roofs in the Marina? Is that to keep architectural visual look the same, or is it concern over flat roofs in general for some other reason?
The handbook states there are to be no flat roofs, and so staff's job is to enforce what is in the zoning document, which is the handbook. So, and staff is stating that this design is a flat roof. It's not a pitched roof. And so, that is why we're recommending that the architecture be revised to have a roof that is not flat.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Karen, you had mentioned a little bit earlier about, we were talking about the roof that went in, you know, the standards of that, but then you were talking about the brick.
The block in the rear, uh-huh.
Right, right. Would, if, on your option one, is that included in that?
The, yes, that would say that the condition states that they have to revise the architectural elevations to the approval of the administrator. So, we would consider that, yeah.
Okay, so that would be included in option one.
And that would include also other things like what the dumpster enclosure looks like, those kind of items too, which are the details that we're not addressing at this time.
Right.
We would address those details when we review the building plans.
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Any other questions for Karen? If not, this is a public hearing item. So, is there any member of the public that would like to come and speak for up to three minutes?
Can I speak as the applicant?
Oh, I'm sorry. I moved past that.
Yeah, sure.
This is the applicant and not the public speaker for three minutes. I apologize.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Melissa Lindell. I'm with Wood Rogers, and I have with me tonight Don Luliquis with Maverick. Karen did a really good job of summarizing the project, so I'm not going to go into those details about the convenience store. And I just want to point out that this is the first Maverick store that's being proposed in Sparks, and the applicant is looking forward to developing other stores in the future in Sparks. We've worked really closely with the staff on the site plan, landscaping, and architecture. We've gone back and forth. The Marina-type architecture was the most difficult for the applicant to deal with because the Maverick stores are typically kind of with a country flair. So, this is, this is a Marina flair. So, the architects spent a lot of time researching Marina-type landscaping or architecture and came up with a Nantucket-type theme, which the staff supported. I just want to go through some of the iterations that we came through and show you how much we have tried to comply with staff work back and forth. This was the first elevation that came in, and as you can see, the roof appears flat here, and the shed roof is provided in the front and the awning. And this was kind of a Nantucket theme with darker stone. This elevation shows the back of the store, which typically Maverick uses with a chain link, slat-type fence in the back, and that was first proposed. And then this was also the gas canopy that was proposed with a typical Maverick insignia, and that's kind of their typical look. So, we move forward with other additions after we get staff comments to change up some of the, some of the architecture here and move the parapets and add some white and some more lighting. And on that one, we were told not to go with the chain link fence, so we went with the block, the block wall, the split-face block wall. And we still had a different color scheme here. So, following that and a lot of different roof elevations, you can see we've got the pitched roof here, and the roof does appear flat. So, we moved on with another design to meet staff's concerns. We changed the block to a gray ledgestone type that matches the car wash more. We've got a different siding here that meets the handbook criteria of the gray and white. We upped the roof so it really doesn't look like a flat roof, and there was a little misinterpretation with the handbook, or we would have changed it if we knew that it was meant to be no-flat roof totally, or it doesn't look like a flat roof. So, we were going with the, it doesn't look like a flat roof. We amended those and again, came up with split-phase design. We increased the height of the front entrance, and we increased the width of this to kind of make the varied roof outline. And with that, we moved forward with the gas canopy because there was an issue of breaking up the canopy. So, we came up with this design to break up the canopy, and that was another iteration. So, finally, the roof was not being well-received, so we increased the size of the roof again, the height of the roof, to further make it not look like a flat roof in here, increased the size of this element in here, added articulation, and you can see in this one that it really doesn't appear to be the flat roof, and now we have a lot of variation. And with that, the staff was still not happy with the canopy, so we came up with a way to break up the canopy, which I think now staff is happy with, so we no longer have the element up here, but we have three different elements here. And I believe the staff canopy is not really a concern at this point. Just in terms of the overall architecture, we really didn't realize until the staff report that the block wall here was an issue. Maverick is more than willing to change that block wall out and make it match the building materials here and add the articulation. But we really looked at the roof, took, took, the architects gave them direction to look at the roof, and we've got a problem here. We've got 15 pieces of equipment that need to be on the roof. It encompasses over 1,000 square feet of area and seven skylights, and we want the skylights to create a better work environment and to save energy. So, the architects struggled with the whole making this a complete pitched roof, but we still, we still go with the idea that it does not look like a flat roof. So, it has been difficult to meet that design. So, I went and looked at around the area in terms of roofs, and right across in the Marina area, we've got this building here with a totally flat roof that looks like a flat roof, just a little bit of a peak. This is just to the east in the Marina area. We've got this building here, which again, looks like a flat roof, which we don't think ours does, and finally, the one, the one on the corner with the Marina theme, no flat, a lot of flat roof. And then we went into the Shields, into the Marina area, and we've got Olive Garden with a flat roof, so we're, I just wanted to point those out. In terms of the handbook itself, there is a diagram in there that is kind of a poor diagram. It's hard to read, but it shows the architecture that we're supposed to follow. The car wash followed this. This was for a big center. We're not really proposing a big center. It just didn't happen in that area. But we have the car wash that kind of followed this, and I contend that this exhibit shows a flat roof right there, and then some other pitched roofs. So, I think that the exhibit doesn't quite match, or gives some flexibility to what we want. This is a car wash facility, and they've done a great job with it. It's Mr. Mankey's property. It looks good. But I contend that this violates the handbook, the very handbook section that we are asking for some flexibility on, because this building is done in tan. And if you look at, I don't know if you can make that bigger, but this, so, these are These are the standards for the Buccaneer area where the car wash is located. Specifically says, "The color scheme shall be terracotta and rust and white and gray structures." We're in compliance with that. The car wash facility that's on there is tan, so I think that there's, there has been some leeway here in the past. This also says it should be, the design should be in compliance with that exhibit, which I contend shows part of it in a flat roof. And then this indication that there should be no flat roofs, we were thinking it was more the appearance of a flat roof. So, with that, we're asking for some leniency, we're asking for some interpretation. I think there's been interpretation before the car wash, because it specifically does not comply with the same set of bullet points that we're having trouble with. Maverick's made a lot of changes. We're willing to make that change in the block wall. They're asking for some interpretation. We believe it meets the intent of the handbook and the intent of the area. We've worked very hard. With that, thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, I'm available, and so is Don Luliquis from Maverick. Thank you.
Apologize for jumping past you to the public hearing, but are there any questions from the commissioners for the applicant? from the commissioners for the applicant?
Do you have some specific things that you're looking for in terms of leniency?
We would like you to agree with us that this exhibit shows a flat roof, and that we are not appearing to have a flat roof. That's the only issue with this, the appearance of this as a flat roof or a shed roof, and we're contending that this is not a flat roof like this type of roof is. Because this doesn't bring the roof all the way to the top, and we are bringing the roof all the way to the top. So it's the appearance. And in terms of trying to make this a complete pitched roof, we've got the big problem with the 15 above roof, on the roof, equipment, pieces of equipment that way. So that's what I'm looking for.
So there is no angle from which it would appear to be a flat roof in your current design?
No angle on this mass here where it would, it appeared to be a flat roof. If you look at the side areas, you see that there's a lot of articulation, and the front actually has that peak. So I think the handbook is just a little vague, I think it's been interpreted in the past, the color scheme. We were told that we had to have the gray and white color, even though the car wash has the tan color. So I don't know how that happened, but we're asking for a little leniency with that.
But the leniency that you're asking for is the section, the condition that deals with the flat roof, essentially?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Now, it's a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come speak for up to three minutes? I saw someone raise their hand before, changed your mind. Anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments. I, for one, I think I'm going to, I'm going to go with option two myself after listening to Melissa. It's going to be a welcome sight to have that lot down there finished. The colors, I like the colors, and the elevations. I think that your articulation for the roof is maybe not meeting the flat roof, but I think it's going to work out for the aesthetics of it. I know the landscaping around there is going to be first-class, and that's one of the very first things I look at is the landscaping. The block wall, we went from chain-link to a center block, and now back again to what staff wanted, you know, the kind of wall, so I, for one, I'm going to support option number two.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question of Armando. And it looks like he wanted to add something, so I'd like to know what he has to say.
The only comment I would make is that with regard to some of the examples of those other roofs in the vicinity, they may be in the vicinity, but they're not covered by this handbook, so just a point of clarification on that.
Thank you, because I was curious about that. One more thing?
Yes.
So this diagram with the rooftop equipment, is there, I don't know, I don't know that I think it's all that bad either, so I don't, anyway, never mind.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
I move to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 12013, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 12 as listed in the staff report.
I have a, well, it's been moved and seconded, so it's open for discussion. So are we eliminating condition nine?
Yes, that's correct.
So there will be 12 conditions, but it won't be 1 through 12, it'll be...
It gets renumbered, yes.
It would be, get renumbered, and it'll be architecture item nine that gets removed.
Yes, that's correct.
Everyone understand that?
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second to move forward with the, from Commissioner Lee, and who was the second?
Barbara.
Commissioner Sanders, thank you.
One more comment then?
Yes.
And that does include the last design for the fence in the back, right?
Yes, we will match the, the fence will not be a split-face block, it'll be, it'll match the siding with articulation.
Thank you. Are we have a motion? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have one more item before we get to our item that is of interest to most folks here. This is a general business item, PCN 11029. If you can keep it down, please, while we're in our meeting, we appreciate it.
Again, for the record, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. This item before you tonight is a consideration on a request for a final approval of the Crest Gate Pyramid Plan Development Handbook. This is the property for, this would be Pyramid and McCarran. On April 4th, 2012, the City Council tentatively approved the amendments to the Plan Development Handbook to allow for personal and RV storage. This agenda item asks the Planning Commission to consider the recommending final approval of the handbook. Staff has reviewed the final draft of the Crest Gate Pyramid Plan Development Handbook, and it constitutes a substantial compliance with the tentatively approved handbook, so staff is recommending approval. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Karen? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion.
That'd be wonderful.
Since we've been through this many times, this project. I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council of PCN 11029 as the final draft and substantial compliance with the City Council actions on tentative approval of the amendment to Crest Gate Pyramid Plan Development, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
One second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sperber, and a second by Commissioner Sanders. Get my S's next up. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you.
Good luck, Ken.
All right, now we're, all right, we are back to item number 10 on the agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I recommend that we take a five-minute break, just for the potential length of this next item? We can get up and use the restroom and come back?
It is 7:29, so let's say 7:35, we'll begin the meeting.
We're all set? Where's Armando? There he is.
Good.
No, I think we're good. We're all set? All right, I'll call back to order the Planning Commission meeting. We are on item PCN 12010, Red Hawk Land Company. Before I turn it over to Tim Thompson, who will be making the presentation, just like to announce that I am a resident of Wingfield Springs and contemplated abstaining from the meeting going forward and have decided that I can rule on any agenda items fairly and without prejudice, so I am going to continue. So, Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Thompson, senior planner.
Again, for the record. The requests before you tonight are for master plan amendments and an amendment to the Wingfield Springs Plan Development Handbook. What I'd like to do is give a quick summary at first, and then I'd like to go through each proposed item as proposed by the applicant, much like I did with the residents that I spoke to, and then summarize again. I did speak to a lot of residents. I did receive a lot of comments. For anyone who I may not have been able to call back, I apologize. I did try my best to get back with everybody, but there were just a ton of calls. And so, I think for the benefit of everyone here, those who may be watching at home, that I go through and kind of give the same summary that I gave the folks on the phone, to give everyone hopefully a better understanding of what the proposals are. The first is for a series of master plan amendments. There are actually four. They would be to change about 2.67 acres from open space to six dwelling units to the acre, to change about 1.8 acres from open space to four dwelling units to the acre, and then change about eight acres from four dwelling units to the acre to open space, and then change the land use designation on 10.9 acres from open space to four dwelling units to the acre. And then, the second part of the request is for tentative approval of an amendment to the Wingfield Springs Plan Development Handbook. The amendments include changes to the land use summary table and the land use maps, and then there are some minor changes to the setback requirements, both in the patio, home, and builder lot designations. It is my understanding that the applicant is choosing to withdraw certain portions of this application tonight. As we go through this, I will point out these particular areas. It's my understanding that the applicant is choosing to withdraw any of the changes related to Village 5A, meaning the master plan amendment and the handbook amendment. They are choosing to withdraw Village 19C, which is a handbook amendment, and then they are choosing to withdraw Village 20A, which is a master plan amendment and a handbook amendment.
What was that last one, Tim?
Village 20A.
It's a three lot.
Computer, please. Essentially, what's taking place here is the developer, Red Hawk Land Company, they have identified some land that is within their control, that they believe is underutilized, and they are looking to further develop those properties. The first proposal is what is called Village 5A. Village 5A was proposed to be located on the northeast corner of Vista and Wingfield Parkway, south of Ray Del Sierra Drive. It is 2.67 acres. The city's master plan classifies this as open space. The applicant is requesting an amendment from open space to six dwelling units to the acre. In addition to that, the applicant is proposing an amendment to the handbook to add Village 5 into the land use table and on the land use map, and they are proposing a designation of patio homes and a maximum of 18 lots. And for everyone's reference, patio homes, 4,000 square foot minimum lot size. The second request...I thought these were in order. The second request is for Village 19C. 19C is located south of Vista Boulevard, adjacent to the foothills at Wingfield Entry Monument signage. This property is already master planned, four dwelling units to the acre.
Excuse me, Tim, isn't that 17A?
This is 19C. Sorry, I went out of order, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
This is 19C, and it's already master planned, four dwelling units to the acre, so no master plan amendment is required. However, there is a handbook amendment that they are proposing to add this village. It would also be patio home designation, and it would be a maximum of 12 lots. The next proposed village was Village 20A. Village 20A is located along Wingfield Hills Road, just west of Solstice Drive. The property is currently master planned, open space, so this is a request for a master plan amendment from open space to four dwelling units to the acre, and this also includes a handbook amendment that would give this the builder lot designation with a maximum of three lots. Next is Village 27, which is located around the Hills Course. Essentially, what the applicant is proposing in this case is to reallocate some of the existing land use. The area over here, when you look at the land use map, is about 50-something acres, and what they're proposing to do is condense that land use area to the outline that you see here, and then reallocate some of that property over in the vicinity of Singing Hills Drive and Wingfield Hills Road. At the end of the day, what you see here is a net increase of approximately eight acres of open space. So, they're taking...this is 3.7 acres. They would be requesting to go from open space to four dwelling units to the acre, and then over here, they would be requesting to go from eight acres of...four dwelling units to the acre to eight acres of open space. Next is Village 28. Village 28 was approved several years ago. It's already included in the handbook. It calls for 20 lots, 20 builder lots, on approximately 10, 11 acres. Again, it's already included in the plan. When this was adopted, any impact should have been considered at that point in time. This was actually a request of staff to include this in this master plan amendment, so that the land use plan and the handbook are consistent. So, this was a request of staff to include this. Next is Village 17A. The reason why I did this out of order was because this proposed village and Village 31 are similar in that the master plan land use is commercial, is general commercial. The general commercial land use designation does have some provisions for single or multifamily residential, and so, in both of these cases, a master plan amendment is not required. The Wingfield Springs Handbook designates this property as commercial. In this case, the applicant is proposing to change the land use table and map to reflect patio homes. In this particular case, it would be a maximum of 14 lots. Last is Village 31. Several years ago, these two areas were master planned to commercial. It is now the desire of the applicant to move forward with a handbook amendment that changes the handbook designation from commercial to, again, the patio home designation. Both areas are approximately 6.3 acres combined, and the proposal is for a maximum of 36 patio homes between the two areas. I know the question's going to come up regarding Village 30, and I think it's appropriate that we point out that Village 30 is not up for consideration tonight. It is not part of the master plan amendments or the handbook amendments. However, for the benefit of those in the audience and for everyone here, Village 30, a couple of years ago, was included into the Wingfield Springs Handbook. It was given the designation of Village 30 and was designated as golf cottages. The applicant has submitted a separate application for a tentative map to develop Village 30, which would consist of 125 single-family residential lots. As long as the applicant is constructing and designing the subdivision per the standards and regulations of the golf cottage designation, it is completely off the table. I can tell you that staff has worked very closely with them, and that the design, at this point, appears to comply with all the requirements, and the applicant will be moving forward with a final map in the near future. But again, I bring that up for informational purposes only, because I know the question will be asked. I know there's a lot of curiosity, but just to make it clear, there is nothing on the table tonight that would affect the development of Village 30, and it is not up for consideration tonight. So, Village 30 is known as the Out Parcel. It's about 17 acres. It's located south of Poco Ray Drive and east of Wingfield Springs Road. So, it's this area here.
How many acres is that, Tim?
It's about 17. So, again, just for informational purpose, so that everyone's aware of the scope here. I know that this has been a question that folks have had. Going back to Village 5A, again, the applicant is asking to withdraw this item tonight, and so, it is...it will no longer be considered tonight. Given that, I will refrain from getting into staff's position on this particular item. Village 17A, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the handbook amendments relative to this particular village. Staff cannot find any reason to not support this. We don't believe that there are any impacts to adjacent residents. You know, in this particular case, you know, the closest residential is going to be across Vista Boulevard. Again, the commercial designation does have some provisions for commercial land use, and so, we're recommending that you go ahead and forward a recommendation of approval on. I would point out that there may be some access constraints related to this. You're looking at likely ride-in, ride-out access here, so just to point that out for everyone. Village 19C, this is another village that the applicant is requesting to withdraw tonight, and so, the handbook amendment associated with Village 19C is...will be withdrawn and will not be considered tonight. Next is Village 20A. Again, this is an item that is going to be withdrawn and is not up for consideration tonight, so therefore, you will not be considering the master plan amendment or the handbook amendments associated with this particular village. Village 27, staff is recommending that you approve the master plan amendments associated with Village 27, as well as the handbook amendments to include the eight additional This particular item, I think staff thought long and hard about whether we could support this or not. I think that in looking at the proposed changes and any potential impacts, particularly around the intersection of Wingfield Hills Road and Singing Hills Drive, which is where the applicant would be proposing to add additional units. The lots on Old Waverly Court are about 94 feet above Singing Hills, actually probably a little bit more if we go down to the elevation of the street, but there's 94 feet of grade separation there. And so, staff didn't believe that there would be any visual impacts associated with any of the homes on Old Waverly Court. The homes on the north side of Singing Hills Drive, those homes are view lots that are oriented towards the north, and their view is towards the north and looking over those golf holes. Our belief was, any impacts associated with the development of this particular area would be likely geared towards grading and hillside development, and it was staff's belief that any of those concerns, or many of those concerns, would likely be addressed through the applicant's requirement to comply with the hillside development ordinance when a subdivision map was proposed. And so, based on that, we felt that the identified impacts could be mitigated and likely could be mitigated at the time that development was proposed, and so, we chose to go ahead and support this amendment. I think the other important aspect that may have pushed that recommendation was the fact that these changes relative to Village 28 actually gain an additional eight acres of open space. Given the other requests and the proposals to change open space to a residential designation, this seemed like a good compromise, if you will, to actually gain a little extra open space here. When you're talking about 1,645 acres, which is the size of the entire Wingfield Springs development, eight acres doesn't sound like much, but it's eight acres of open space. Village 28, again, this was a request that staff made of the applicant in order to bring the land use into conformance with the handbook, and so, we are recommending that you do approve the master plan amendment associated with Village 28. And then, Village 31, again, similar to Village 17A, these are commercial pieces, and there is an allowance for the residential uses. Staff did not believe that there would be any significant impacts to the adjacent properties. In fact, the homes to the north of the triangular piece here, which is known as Riada, Pioneer Meadows, Village 9, I believe, you know, those are cluster court-type homes. There's a small lot product, which is what the patio home designation would allow for as well. In fact, the cluster court homes are probably a little more dense and probably less area than what the patio homes would be. So, again, staff is going to support the changes to Village 31 and would urge you to approve the changes related to that in the handbook. So, again, to go back and summarize, the changes related to Village 5A, 19C, and 20A are being withdrawn tonight by the applicant and will not be considered. And as far as the other villages, staff does recommend that you move forward with approval of both the master plan amendments and the changes to the handbook. And I would be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Does the Planning Commission have questions for Tim? Is the applicant available? I'd like to speak. If you could turn that off, I would appreciate it. Hang on one second. Thank you. Go ahead, state your name.
Okay. Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. Jackie Sino, I'm here on behalf of Red Hawk...oh, sorry about that. Jackie Sino, here on behalf of Red Hawk Land Development, and I just want to be real brief tonight, but I've been working over the last several months with Tim Thompson and John, as well as Armando, going over the proposal for the master plan amendments as well as the handbook amendments. I think we have come to a decision that we would like to withdraw, just reiterating what Tim already mentioned, Village 5A and Village 20A from our master plan amendment, as well as withdrawal, our application for a handbook amendment on Villages 5A, 20A, and 19C only. And so, tonight, you know, again, we've looked over the land plan, and we've assessed certain parcels that we would consider developing in the future. This is one of...one step of a multi-step process, and so, we're just excited to have our proposals heard this evening. I'm here to answer any questions. I also have our planner, Randy Walters, from Places Consulting here, so if any questions arise, we'll be able to answer them. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
No. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing item, and I have a number of requests here. I'd like to make a couple of statements before we get started here. First of all, you each have everyone on this list, and anyone else who wants to complete a form here, has the opportunity to speak for three minutes, and we would be happy to listen to all of you make your presentation up to three minutes. But please be kind to each other and us, that if your position has been stated previously by previous speakers, and you want to simply say that you agree with those findings, that would be helpful to us and probably to everyone else, but you have the full three minutes allotted to you should you choose to use it. In addition, as Tim and the applicant have said, Item 5A, 19C, and 20A have been withdrawn, so you are free to come up here and speak for three minutes, but you'll be speaking...if you're talking about those three items, you'll be speaking about something that is no longer on the table. So, with that in mind, I would...
Mr. Chairman, if I might for a second, could you please articulate that this particular public hearing that we're at right now, as I understand the agenda, is for 10A, and there will be a second one for 10B?
Correct.
Thank you.
Item 10A is a master plan amendment. Item 10B is a request for tentative approval of the Plan Development Handbook. So, there will be...at some point, there will be two separate motions, actually more than two, because we have multiple motions on each of those, but there is a master plan agreement. So theoretically, when we complete one of these, all of you will have the opportunity to speak for another three minutes on the second one, if you wish. Thank you, Attorney Thorne. Ralph and Linda Hartman is our first speaker.
We have to not to speak tonight because of the withdrawals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rochelle and Dean Wellens, and I...
Thank you.
Likewise. I apologize for my mispronunciation of anyone that I screw up. Mark Liski.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mark Liski, I'm a resident of the community at the corner of Hubble and Vista, and to be honest with you, I couldn't keep up with the 19As and the 21Cs and the 42Bs on that, so I haven't got a clue what the heck's going on. But I do come to speak to the fact that I don't believe the applicant is a good neighbor to the community, and I am in opposition, therefore, to what they're requesting. My general stance is that this body is directed to be in conformance... My general stance is that this body is directed to be in conformance with your municipal code, Section 20, the guidelines for any and all land use controls. One of the key points in this is promote public health, safety, morals, convenience, or general welfare of the community. I speak specifically to property at the corner of Hubble and Vista that is under the fiduciary care of the applicant. Those are three abandoned golf holes that the applicant has simply walked away from and is no longer maintaining. They are an eyesore. They are an abomination to the community. I do not believe an applicant that does not take care of the resources they already have under their charge should be given additional resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your enthusiasm, but I'd like to request that the folks speak to the commission and we leave it at that. Kathy Green.
Do you need the address?
Yes, please.
6398 Toronto Court, Sparks, Nevada. I wasn't sure I was going to speak tonight and kind of got volunteered to do so. We were pleased with several of the withdrawals. Now, may I ask a question? Can those come back? They're free to put them back on at a later time, is that correct?
That is correct.
To resubmit those? Okay. Thank you.
They are being, for the benefit of the audience, they're being withdrawn without prejudice, so they have the right to bring them back at any point.
My main concern on most of these, the ones that were submitted originally, as well as the ones that are remaining, is that the designation, I don't really have a problem with the four units per acre, a lot of the stuff all around is, but if you look at the sites, and maybe more so the ones that have been currently withdrawn, so this would apply more if they come back on, is the fact that a lot of the homes around them don't fit into the patio home designation. They have much bigger lots and would just maybe be more interested in seeing something more akin to the homes around them, whether it's the remaining ones or it's the ones, whether they're added back on at a later date. My other concern is that the school system is in the process of redrawing the school district zones for the Spanish Springs Elementary Schools. They are currently dealing with a lot of problems from overcrowding at Van Gorder and Spanish Springs. Those two schools, their zoning is closely related, and they've had to keep those schools on multi-track, even though they have been able to remove others. They are trying to shift the students to balance it out more evenly, but the voting you guys do, especially within Red Hawk and Wingfield Springs area, directly impacts Van Gorder, because that is pretty much its zone, and then in a domino effect hits the other schools as well. And just, you know, something to keep in mind that they are very crowded, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Oh, and one more thing, if I have a few seconds left.
You have 22 seconds.
The park, I think it's actually 17C, not 17, the park part is 17A. It's my understanding that that money has been set aside for a long time, but there were no triggers for it. I would like to see some triggers put in place with some of these permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Haldeman.
I don't want to speak.
You're okay. Thank you. Mel Cohen.
Pass.
Thank you. Lynn Hasting.
Lynn Hasting, 6390 Toronto Court. I wanted to start by thanking the applicant for the withdrawals and listening at the neighborhood meeting. I think that really does, that means a lot to me. I did want to just back up Kathy Green. I had a question on 17A. I couldn't keep up with how many homes were designated for 17A, so if I could get that number again. And then what type of homes those would be, because that is right behind my, I mean, it's not right behind my house, but I would be able to see it. But then also, that park has been promised, quote, us for, you know, 12 years, and I just heard about there being money set aside for it. I wasn't able to, Tim did try to return my call, but we hadn't spoke. But again, if there could be triggers for that, so that we could get that sort of cleaned up back there, that would be very nice. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you. Fay Tom.
No.
Thank you. Oh, my God. Anita Kitchingman.
There were just too many letters. It was overwhelming.
Okay. I'm also on Toronto Court with Kathy and Lynn, 6391. I just wanted to share a concern. I moved there in 2000, and I came in with two children, real small. I was told by the developer, "Park is going to be there next spring." 12 years later, developers have come and they have gone, excuse me. I now have a 17-year-old, a 15-year-old, and a seven-year-old, and we don't have a park! And to me, this next step we're going to take as a city, I think we need to clean up our history of this neighborhood before we step on, because there's a lot of people in that neighborhood that love that place, but it's losing its depth of purity that we started with. Because when we moved in there, it was wonderful. As it's gone by and people have changed our plan, it's gotten less and less. So I just want to share that piece. I know it's a little bit reiterating what they say.
Thank you very much.
How do you pronounce the last name?
Kitchingman. George Kurtz. Did I get that right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Kurtz, I live at 2793 Silverton Way. Many of my questions were answered tonight, but I guess my chief question is on 17A. I know it takes a village, but I was counting on four and I lost count after nine. 17A, just a couple of comments. I called the Planning Commission 10 years ago and asked when the park was going to be built. They told me that Sparks had plenty of parks, not to worry about it, and it's now 12 years later. I really would like to see that park built, so I would ask them for some consideration on that. The other thing is, I'd like to know what on the patio homes, are they going to be two-story homes, are they going to be one-story homes? Just what is the size of those patio homes? You call them cluster homes. Are they going to be similar to the homes that are across the way on Vista Boulevard? And that's really the balance of my questions, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. I see all the commissioners writing your questions down. We'll try to get them answered before we leave here tonight. Mark Miller. Was that a pass? Thank you. Lori Miller.
Dear. Good day.
Hi. Lori Miller, I'm at 6325 Ginger Quill Court, and we back to the windmill. We lived, we moved in there in 2001, so we've been there quite some time.
Could you speak up just a little bit, please?
Maybe.
Right.
My concern was, of course, that area right behind my home, which they've pulled away from now, but my concern is why they pulled away and why they made that suggestion in the first place. The Wingfield Springs icon is that windmill and the open space that's around it and the golf courses. It sets up a beautiful view of the whole community. To make a suggestion to put a bunch of patio homes right there at the corner of that area makes no sense if you have the community's best interest at heart. So despite the fact that they've pulled that out and are maybe thinking about doing it later or not at all, still makes me question their motives. And it seems as if it's almost like a shell game, that they threw all of these things at you, and then they pulled out the three that were most questionable. So I ask you to double-check and really think about what's best for the community before you approve any of their suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Mary Pritchard.
Pass.
Thank you. Nick Stroza.
Thank you. I submitted some written responses, and I'll submit on those, but I also, secondly, I also, on that frontage space, and also the voters of the applicant. Thanks.
Thank you. Lou D'Orio.
My name's Lou D'Orio. I live at 3334 Ten Mile Drive, Sparks. I'm currently the president of the HOA for Wingfield Springs. I attended the meeting on Monday night, and I made the point to be here tonight. Most of my questions, of course, have been answered, and the people have made good statements on the issues that really impact them and so forth. But I'd like to attack it a little bit, you know, different area from the homeowners association. We were here about four years ago, and most of that, at that time, the developers had left by not completing their common areas, and we had no triggers to make them complete it. And I think we went over a few different ways of making them comply, and now is the time that we're going to go through this once again, and it's the early stages. So when they do, in fact, come back with a development with common areas, which the HOA will ultimately own, we like to make sure they won't complete it and complete it to our standards, which are going to be efficient standards, water-wise and site-wise. So if we can develop some triggers for that handbook that we will, in fact, make them complete it, because we've had, spent close to $50,000 to $60,000 completing some of the common areas that they just abandoned when they went bankrupt. So when the house is completed, they would leave these empty areas saying, "Oh, that'll get finished." Never gets finished, and bam. Secondly, open area, open space, I'm sorry. It's a nice statement, but it doesn't really mean anything, because there's so many meanings to it. It would be nice to see us all get together on what open space is. If you have it on a map and it says open space, and somebody comes in the average, the average homeowner sees open space, that's open space forever. They don't realize that, or they shouldn't, why should they even realize that's going to someday in the future be redeveloped if it's going to be for something else? We should have a little asterisk saying, "Open space, however, open to be redeveloped or rezoned in the future." So they can look at it and say, "Okay, it's open now," but in the future, so it eliminates this impact, because a lot of the people said, "This is open space. What are these guys doing? You know, I came here when I was so far from bed." Thirdly, cluster homes and patio homes don't ring a good bell. When you say cluster and you say patio, it just doesn't have a good, for the area that we're in. We're one family, single-family, wide, some are on an acre, some are two acres and so forth. It seems like you want to condense so much in one area. And before I finish, the whole impact of this, we have a lot of foreclosures and a lot of houses that are up for sale. Before the commission says, "Okay, let's go with some new housing," take into consideration the housing that's now available and the foreclosures, so that the people can sell their houses and do what they have to do with the current housing before even one of these starts to get building. Thank you.
Thank you. Denny Jensen.
I live at 7231 Silver King Drive, and I'm currently the vice president of the homeowners association. The first thing that I'd like to say is I hear the concerns that some of our residents have expressed relative to what Red Hawk Land Company may do in the future. But I would like to make public recognition and say a thank you for the meeting that we had the other night. Red Hawk Land Company gave us an opportunity to express our views, and it became very heated, and a lot of emotion was shown, and I feel that Red Hawk Land Company listened to us on some issues, and so I say thank you to them. The second point that I wanted to make, which is similar to Lou's, is relative to the availability of properties and the patio homes. The concern that I have is almost across the street from where, I think it was 17 is going to be done, and then, let's say, a quarter of a mile from Wingfield Springs, is the Riada development, which is basically patio homes. And we have a development there that basically has been abandoned, and we have structures there that are partially up in various stages, are rotting, literally just sitting in the sun. No paint on them, no roofs on them, nothing. Now, before we proceed with adding to the density of patio homes out in that area, wouldn't it make sense to see Riada completed? And once that's completed, then consider how we go forward with other patio homes. I think it's smart to go slow and not make the same mistake that we have made with Riada. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom Odegaard.
I live at 5905 Palomesa Drive in Sparks, Nevada. My wife and I are new residents, so much of this is new to us. We have not yet been here one year. And I think the kind of thinking that I have about this issue is similar, but maybe a little different from some of the opinions already expressed, and I must ask perhaps in advance some forgiveness for belaboring the obvious. I have a tendency to do that, and I hope you will, if I do that, if you'll forgive me.
You can only do it for two minutes and 29 seconds.
Thank you. It may not take me that long. I did have a couple of things that are just in my mind. There's always the question, when there is change, who benefits and who pays the cost? This is something that you have a very hard job to do, because you have to balance those things. But that's something that's interesting to me, it's a concern to me, because it's usually the costs are borne by very specific kinds of people, and the benefits are also very specific from the developer. In this case, I presume, otherwise they wouldn't be doing this. These are smart people, I think, and have their interests at heart. The other part is whose other interests are being affected and which way. And many of the residents have already spoken to those particular interests, and I don't think I have anything to add to that. I think we all know that nothing is forever. Rules change, zoning changes, but I wonder what kind of signal is sent when we see zoning changes for potential residents, for potential buyers, for potential investors in this particular area? If there are changes, if there are proposals being brought and then withdrawn and maybe brought back again, what kind of predictability is there for making a long-term commitment? These are fairly substantial investments, lasting for a fairly long period of time, and it's nice to have at least some predictability in the rule structure in order to proceed with such investments. I just wonder if people currently living in the area would have made the same decisions knowing what changes might have come unexpectedly, for example. There are some clear wealth distribution issues involved here. There are winners and losers, and again, the balancing of these wealth issues is something to take into account, and you know that better than I, I think. There are those who are affected favorably, those who are affected adversely. Is the common good being enhanced, as well as the individual good? I would thank you for your work in this area. It's a hard job, and I appreciate your listening to us, and would leave you with maybe one reference to the Wealth of Nations, Adam Smith, our moral philosopher, in Book One, Chapter 11. Conclusion, paragraph 10 has interesting things to say, and I would commend that to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Odegaard?
It would be helpful if we could get Village 27 on the screen. Would that be possible?
Kinsum. Tim Scott.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. This is only more difficult and I have to follow my older brother to the mic. But I am here, obviously, to speak to the changes of particular interest is Village 27. And I would like to register and document my opposition to any master plan changes in that area. A brief search of the internet brought up a couple of, I thought, interesting documents that I will share with the commissioners. I did only make one copy because I didn't know how many commissioners there were. But there was a document from the Wingfield Springs Realty that was handed to all of us that came out there to buy property years ago. And that they talked to a master planned community of Wingfield Springs. Community features prominently mentioned as the number one thing, carefully orchestrated views and vistas to the projects, abundant golf, water features and nearby mountain ranges. That will change if you approve this. Then I found a very interesting article, that was written some four years ago, a couple of years before I came here. And there was obviously another attempt to change the master plan four years ago. Mr. Ira Hansen wrote a good article, I thought, in the Daily Sparks Tribune and I would like to read just a small part of that. And he addresses the Sparks City Master Plan. He says, "It was a monumental task and the synthesis is a notably thorough piece of work. Instead of the helter-skelter patchwork of the past, which changed with anyone's whim, the master plan became the growth bible for Sparks. Growth now had policies and blueprint the whole city agreed to follow. And follow the plan it did, the whole Wingfield area has in fact been built with only very minor adjustments in almost perfect accord with the original master plan. A review of the original design, the housing densities, the commercial nodes, the open spaces, the pathways and the parks are consistent. A tribute to both the designs and the willingness of the city staff to insist development and developers stay within its parameters." I will share that with you. What I would say is that the change request that they have put forth specifically for Area 27, the Singing Hills area, is not consistent with what was laid out for that area. They're talking about lot sizes of four to six thousand square feet out there, is my understanding. Lot sizes are more like a third and a half acre for custom-built homes. The whole area was, there was never any discussion of patio homes or duplexes or other smaller housing. This is a custom-built home area. I have the following concerns.
Finish up if you can finish very quickly.
Five concerns. Incompatible housing with existing, increased traffic, impacted views, increased noise, decreased property values, and once the camel's nose is under the tent. And I would quote Messino, who said, "One step of a multi-step process, they will be back for many, many changes to the master plan." The camel's nose is under the tent. I assure you that Singing Hills, we will not hear the sound of music up there if this
James Kwazny?
My name is James Kwazny. I live at 6554 Ray Del Sierra. And I would just like to take a little different approach, but some of my comments will echo others that have already spoke before us. I think fundamentally, what we've learned in a very short period of time, the Messino operation, I think by design, very limited, spent very little in terms of trying to educate the impacted homeowners of Red Hawk. And just as an indication, the invitation for the informational meeting was this slip of paper. That's all that was on there and there wasn't any detail. As a result of that, many homeowners, the meeting that was held Monday involved over 400 people showed up. And many of the interpretations, much like what we heard this evening as Tim went through the plans, it's confusing. The references to what is affected, what the changes are, there's not a clear understanding. So homeowners are frustrated, but 400 of them showed up on a Monday night at 5:30. That gives you the indication. And I would venture to say by show of hands, how many people in this room are in support of the overall changes to the master plan in Red Hawk? Are there those that are in support of it or are most of us in opposition? The reason for that is that we all bought, and I tried to get past this process of the changes and you certainly are much aware of that, and it's a long process and it's very complex, especially to an outsider, first time exposed. The point that I'd like to make, though, is that I think there's a parallel to all of us when we buy a home or any piece of property. We have an understanding of what the property is, we have title and search and all of the rules and restrictions. In this case, we have CCNA's, handbook and so on. We've become familiar with that. So we know what we bought. Well, the Messino operation acquired the property recently. They know what they bought. And in a very short period of time, now the request is to change what they bought. What's of value to the homeowners? The image that we all wanted and had presented to us in different forms was this is a community that's a desired location. It has a sense of nature. It has wide open spaces. And the housing was mixed and most of it larger as opposed to smaller. There are some small patio homes there, but very limited. And what we're now being faced with is the Messinos saying, "I got undeveloped land and I want to build on it to maximize their revenue." So we know why they want to do it. I can't think of a reason why a homeowner would want to have that change made, especially when you emphasize the changes has already been stated, the impact on the Van Gorder school system, the traffic load, the fact that we're losing parks. All of those factors enter into the image that was in the master plan. And now the request is solely to make money. Well, we put our money in there and that, in many cases, was advertised as a destination, the resort at Red Hawk. It was a community that was desired and now there's significant change.
Margaret Brindzak?
Hi, Margaret Brindzak and I live at 6374 North Ginger Quill Court. One of the things I keep hearing over and over again is patio homes. I bought my home almost 10 years ago, 11 years ago. I built out there and it was a community of almost all custom homes, very small cluster of very nice patio homes were built right next to the golf court, right next to resort. Now all of a sudden patio homes are going all over. And there is no public transit out there. That's a huge problem. And going to work, I go usually eight to five, sometimes seven to five, sometimes seven to seven. But I always have a problem even getting out of my subdivision. Sometimes it can take me five to 10 minutes just to get out of my subdivision. I live right next to where they're going to be building 125 patio homes in Village 30. That was already approved. I can't do anything about that, unfortunately. But I can say, if we build this many homes and we have problems already with no public transportation out in that area, problems with people just getting out of the subdivisions that we have now because there's only one or two exits out of certain subdivisions, especially around some of these planned patio homes that are coming up, it's very frustrating when you build a house, and I spent a lot of money on our home, it's a custom home, I've lost a couple hundred thousand dollars on it, like everyone else in our community, we know that, but this is going to actually not help the community, it's going to hurt. And, you know, there's nothing I can do about what's going to be already planned, but there is something that we can do about what you're planning now. We built the houses that we want in a nice-sized lot. Patio homes, I wouldn't mind if they were all custom homes going out there. I don't think anyone would. Patio homes are a lot of people. My husband said there's going to be 125, two dogs every house. How many barking dogs are we going to have next door to us? It's something that you have to consider. You know, everything is going to affect when you think of the population out there right now. It's a rural community, it's not part of the city, we're not a very dense area. And one of the things we liked was the open area when we came out there. You're slowly seeing all the animals and the wildlife go away out there. Used to see a lot. I lived next to the lakes. We used to see a lot more birds that were out there and they're not there anymore. The antelope was brought up in our homeowners meeting on the hills above Singing Hills and I think the gentleman was right. The open land, that was part of the view, the antelope out on the hills when you go and play golf out there. You know, custom homes probably wouldn't interfere with that. Patio homes do. I just want you to just consider that. Thank you.
Marilyn Brainard?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm going to try to project because it's kind of hard, at least at my age, to kind of hear from the back. So I'm going to try to speak a little loudly. My husband and I celebrated our 14th year of residency in Wingfield Springs this April. And I want to say thank you to Tim Thompson and the staff for helping, spending a lot of time on this request tonight. What I'd like to share with you, because maybe all of you have not, I know that not all of you have been on the Planning Commission that long, but here are some of the reasons that we came to embrace. This is a rendering, one of the original, about the wonderful, unique, family-oriented lifestyle in partnership with nature, which it truly is. Also, "We're the best." This was dated winter of 98. "We're the best." The Northern Nevada Builders Association of Northern Nevada named Wingfield Springs, the best new planned community in Northern Nevada. We also have, from, this is dated, let's see, May 1998, "Wide open spaces, social infrastructure, highlight the uniqueness." In this, Gary Dirk, who was our original general manager, is quoted. "What makes this community unique is the amount of open space we have," said Gary Dirk, general manager. "50% of the community is left under, undeveloped, undeveloped. Instead of crowding subdivisions together, we push them apart and put the open space at the center of the community," Dirk said. These were all expectations. Then this to share with you. This was June 21st in 98. "Community plan earns best in the West honors." Okay? And the title, "The Wingfield Springs Development in Sparks Has Been Recognized as Among the Best in 14 Western States for Its Overall Design Attention to Environmental Issues and the Use of Topography." So those were some of the reasons. In a recent nationwide poll by Zogby Associates, oh, 37 seconds, okay, "An overwhelming 86% of association residents have expressed their unambiguous preference to retain control over land use policies within their community." You all represent those of us who are in that 86% and we count on you to do that. I'm sorry, I mean, I'm very pleased to see that some, especially Village 5A, has been taken off the table tonight, but I'm sorry it's not with prejudice. I would love to see it with prejudice so it can't come back when I'm perhaps long gone in the future because it should always remain the way it is today. I know my time is up and I'm sorry, I had more things to say, but there'll probably be future hearings. Thanks so much for all your efforts. I serve on a state commission.
Thank you. Bill Brainard?
Members of the commission, my name is Bill Brainard. I live at 7326 La Costa in Wingfield Springs. Let me just put up two other points that I'd like to have you consider. First of all, nobody's mentioned the budget that we have as a homeowners association here. And of course, frankly, adding these people on, as well as the new areas that they're going to add, we have a water problem there. We can't pay for the water that we're getting. Well, we can, but it's very expensive. So we have a water situation in our homeowners association and so I'm suggesting, and also there's going to be, shoot, come on, Bill, you can do this. There's going to be common areas that are added and they have to be taken care of and we have a large expense for landscaping. So I suggest that if you approve anything here, and I'm, thank goodness you dropped a lot of them, but if you approve any of the others, force them to have their own sub-association and let them pay for what it is that they want to put in there. We don't have the money, you know, we really don't have the money. We don't want to increase our fees just to have this happen. So let them pay for their own. The only other point I had is when we talk about patio, you're talking about higher density. We don't know how tall they want to make these things. And frankly, I saw Mr. Martini here, he might tell you all, I don't know, are they going to have their own attached garages? They're going to have parking lot, you know, they're going to have parking structures out there? And there's no, you know, on these smaller streets, you can't park in front of your places normally. And if you use a severe setback restrict, I'm sorry, if you don't use a severe setback, they're going to be hanging out onto the parkways. Let's see, well, and all, you know, I don't want to look out on a parking lot with a bunch of cars out there and I don't think any of you gentlemen and ladies do either. So I said I'd be brief. There's a lot more. Everybody, I just want to incorporate what everybody else has said so far. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. Any questions?
Beverly McDowell?
I'll pass, but I would like to speak to Tim.
Oh, right. We'll keep you right here. That is everyone who has prefilled out a form, but is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? The only thing that we ask is after you finish speaking, if you will fill out a form so that we have a record. Anyone else in the audience? I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission then. Yes.
May we pull up the applicant and ask some questions to clarify?
Absolutely.
A few questions right off the bat. What's a patio home?
There we go.
I'm glad you asked. A patio home designation is, okay, let me pull out my notes. Patio home designation, I think that the term patio home starts to conjure up a lot of images in people's minds as a multi-unit or a multifamily dwelling. In the handbook, which is what we're referring to, it is a 4,000-square-foot lot minimum. So what that means is that, I was actually looking through my math as people were giving comments, and there are a few developments I think people would be surprised about that they probably live in that are actually the patio home designation. And the patio home, again, is 4,000-square-foot lot minimum. That is just a minimum lot size. So you can go up to 5,000, 6,000. The next designation above a patio home is what they call a builder lot. And that is- The next designation above a patio home is what they call a builder lot, and that is 6,000 square foot lot minimums. And currently, just a couple of different residences along Falcon Ridge, Astronomer Way, Ambush Ridge, and Grossmont are all in the patio home designation. Also, the patio homes are along the 10-mile drive. And so there were a few different speakers that came from those areas that might be surprised that they're actually in a patio home designation, even though their homes may be larger than that. So do you mind if I go on just a moment? Is that okay? Okay. You know, one of the questions that arose at the community meeting, which I really appreciated residents coming to, just to give a little more illumination, because the community meeting is a requirement for the master plan amendment. So really, when we sent out the notices, we made sure that people understood this was just to discuss the master plan amendment, knowing that we would discuss other things through the hearing process. But it did come up, where was I going to go? Oh, about why we would want to develop patio homes. And again, some of the acreage, of the majority of the parcels that we're proposing amendments to, they're small. The largest parcel is 10.87 acres, and that's the one at the very southern parcel, that's Village 28. And it's going to be 20 builder lots, and those are 6,000 square foot lot minimums. But even in the reference, which I know is not something that we're going to be discussing or voting on tonight, but even Village 30, I just want to allude to that as well. Village 30 is about, like Tim Thompson mentioned, about 17 acres, but currently, in the handbook, it is designated, and we are approved for 234 golf cottages. So currently, it's actually approved for what we would call a townhome development. So we are taking that approval, and we're actually going to decrease the density by over 100 units. That golf cottage designation allows up to 14 dwelling units per acre. Right now, with 125 units, we are decreasing the density and going to about seven dwelling units per acre. So I just want to iterate, and I will answer as many questions as you have, but to the residents, we are invested. We have gotten involved recently. I understand that, you know, there is some concern about what would be developed, but what I mentioned, one of the gentlemen said, you know, to quote Messino, "This is one step of a multi-step process." It doesn't mean I'm going to bring up other things. It just means that this is one step coming before you all. Then I have to go to regional planning commission, back to planning commission, then to city council. There's going to be much discussion here. So again, patio homes does not mean townhomes or four-story buildings. We're single-family home builders. We do develop some apartments, some townhomes, but really, if you look at what we develop, primarily, we do single-family homes. The patio homes, most of them, some of them, may be single-family, excuse me, single-story, others may be two-story. We don't have a product right now that we're proposing and that we're bringing before everybody, but we'll make sure that we maximize the square footage so that people feel like they have a large home. Everybody needs space inside of those homes. So I hope that that kind of clarifies for the patio homes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have another speaker there, I see.
Randy. Good evening. For the record, Randy Walter with Places Consulting. I'm here representing Red Hawk Lion this evening. In terms, is this not on? Am I not talking loud enough?
You are, but it-
I need to talk louder. Okay. In reference to the patio homes, everything that's being done in Wingfield Springs is being done per the design handbook that covers all of Wingfield Springs. The patio home designation has been in this handbook since the inception of Wingfield Springs. This is not a new product. This is not a new criteria. This has been in existence in Wingfield Springs for some time. There are some patio homes that were built very early on in this process, and there's been many that have been built since. These are not cluster homes, contrary to what you may have heard from the public. No one said it's cluster homes. There's no category for that within the Wingfield Springs handbook, only patio homes. So that's just to kind of clarify the basis of the patio home.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question real quick. Randy and maybe Jackie there, I know it was brought up from five or six different homeowners out there, but I keep hearing a lot about triggers and when the other developer, they start a project or a park, and they don't finish it, and they're always leaving it up to the homeowners to try to finish it on their own. Can you kind of address maybe some of their concerns over, I mean, what could be done?
No, I did hear the homeowners talking about- pardon me. I did hear some of the homeowners talking about the park. And I just want to clarify, I believe they were referring to Silverton Park. And we are looking into that. You know, several homeowners, I think, and if I'm incorrect, please correct me, but they were alluding to triggers to do certain things within the development. And again, we have gotten involved, we have gotten involved over the last cup, two years primarily, but we are looking into that. We met with the city already, looking into the park and so forth. And so that is something that we're going to, we have to do a little bit more of an analysis. But again, if there was something specific that you want me to address, I can, but I'm not quite sure.
And I'm not either. I, you know, I just would like to, I know there's concern out there. In fact, we heard it a couple of years ago about different developer came in and they just kind of, you know, they don't finish what they start.
And I think, you know, and again, I did hear comments at the community meeting, you know, we have invested a lot of time and money into the golf course since we've been involved. I think that residents, many of them came up to me, even though they may have been opposed to certain things I was proposing, did come up saying that they have seen positive changes. We are working pretty much around the clock with our team to try to make positive changes and investments in the community, trying to improve it. And even what we're bringing here tonight, we would never do anything. I mean, it would not be a good business decision, it's not a good decision across the board, to do anything that would compromise a development that we have ownership over.
Mr. Chairman, the question was triggers. The triggers, the question was not an opportunity for the applicant to preach on their virtues.
Thank you.
You did a good thank you. And then I have, I think it was Tom over here, if I could address Tom's concern. I know you were talking about all the changes and zoning and, you know, you were wondering how, what a balancing act, you know, all that takes from, you know, a lot of it is laws related to planning. It's NRS is that this commission and the staff thoroughly, you know, researches before a lot of us make a decision. So that's where a lot of it comes from. You bet.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
The park, I think, that was being discussed is near Village 17A.
That's correct. Okay. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I was just reviewing my notes. Want to make sure we touch on everything. One other thing that I think there was a lot of confusion is open space. And what does that mean? And, you know, as long as I've been sitting on the planning commission, at times I get confused on open space.
I'll start off with kind of a general overview, and you let me know if you want me to get a little bit more specific. But with this plan development, and I believe it's across the board, with any plan development, we have to allocate 20% of that entire land to open space. I mean, this project is 1,645 acres. So we're looking at a very significant amount of that land being designated open space. No more than 25% of that open space can come from golf course. So right now, even with the portions of property that we are requesting to amend from open space to be able to develop, we, if we were to get, even including those that I withdrew my application on, if we were to be approved for each one of those amendments, I would still be over the 20% minimum of open space by, let's see, I believe I would have 87 more acres than is required. So I'm talking, even if I were to develop every single parcel, and we know that I've already withdrawn my application on several parcels, I would still have at least almost 100 acres over and beyond what is required. So there is a large portion of open space that will not be touched with any type of development.
And I couldn't remember that number, so it's 25% golf.
No more than, yeah, no more than 25% of your 20% open space.
Considered in that number. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one more for Randy. Randy, is Wingfield development out there, is that on the city water? City of sparse water or tumble?
Yes, it's tumble water. That's the region, that kind of community, yes. There is also-
How expensive the water was.
Not the common area.
Yeah, the common areas, I believe, are on reclaimed water. Some of the common areas, not all the common areas. The golf course is still on actual surface water that's coming in from the, or ditch.
Okay.
So there's a combination of water, there's a combination of water from a variety of different sources, but-
Do not use any tumble water on the common areas beneath the individual homes. So it's a huge task.
Correct.
I think that, I think-
Yeah. It was answered.
But have your own water rights.
Thank you, Randy.
Is it possible to address the triggers? Because I don't think that answers the question. Address what?
I'm sorry, but we closed the public hearing, and we will certainly ask the question that you just raised and try to get a little more clarification, but we're not in the public hearing any longer, so I appreciate that. Can you address the issues of your willingness to entertain triggers for common area completion and other promises that might be made with development?
You know, respectfully, I have to understand what promises were made, what exactly, I need more specificity with that statement before I can address it. I do. I need to understand and have a little bit more clarity. I'm not aware of particular triggers.
I think the issue is that there have been some developments done where there were promises made and the triggers were not imposed that forced the completion of those promises. I guess the, what some people in the audience are asking is whether you would entertain as future, as part of future development, triggers that would assure that everything is completed that is promised.
Again, that is something I'd have to understand what exactly is meant by triggers. What does that include? What does that mean?
I understand it's negotiable, but that's the, that was the question I-
I need to understand that. I need more clarity.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
No, not for us.
Okay. If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The agenda is back to the Planning Commission. We have-
Go ahead. Question.
May I ask Armando or Tim, were, and I don't remember, and of course, I have this in front of me, but I can't find the pages now. Were there any triggers, was that ever an issue to begin with? I don't remember there being statements like that originally. Or what they were.
To, I don't want to get sideways on the question about triggers, because really what we're considering right now is the master plan amendment. I think that if we want to discuss a little bit about what triggers may or may not be in place that require certain improvements, I think that's a discussion that's better had on the next item that's related to the handbook amendments. So I think that we'll be willing to address that more appropriately on the next item.
Thank you.
John? Did you just come to be seen in the camera?
Oh, actually, no.[1411.33][1411.33](LAUGHTER).
Could I ask him a question? Obviously. If you heard, one of the comments we were hearing is about the traffic and whether this thing is planned for the traffic, and could you maybe speak about that whole subject?
Certainly. One nice element of the Wingfield Springs development was, infrastructure was closely studied and master planned when the development was begun. The traffic, with particularity to traffic, was studied at the maximum build-out, which we have not achieved yet. So it, all that has been built, and I'm not saying it's functioning perfectly, is still in compliance with that original master traffic study. And the additions we're discussing tonight through both Actions A and B are still in conformance with that traffic study, as well as sewer, storm drain, and the other infrastructure issues.
And maybe explain something, impact fees, and how all this relates to what structures are built or are going to be built.
Certainly, the, Wingfield goes back far enough that it was begun before the regional road impact fee system was in place. Since its adoption, each home that is constructed inside the development has paid its share of regional road impact fees. And for clarity with the commission as well as the audience tonight, those regional road impact fees are used for construction of regional roads. Of that, Vista Boulevard would be the big one. Some more history, when the project was begun, the developer at the time is the one who started We can have discussions on how long it took to get foreign lanes out there.
Right.
Quite a long, because that developer did the first two lanes basically at his cost. It took a while for the impact fees to come into the system to build up the cash to finish the road. And it was through that mechanism that it was accomplished.
Okay. And so any additional homes being built out there will pay-
Will be subject to paying impact fees as well. Yes. Sorry to cut you off, Commissioner.
No, that's okay.
I know where you're going.
We're both talking the same.
Yes, any, any single-family home or multifamily home permit pulled at the building department in Sparks will assess the impact fees at the time.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for staff at the moment? If not, thank you very much. We had the potential for four master plan amendments. Two of those have been withdrawn. The master plan amendment related to Village 5A has been withdrawn, and the master plan agreement, amendment dealing with Village 20A has been withdrawn. So we are dealing with the potential master plan amendment for Village 27 and Village So I would, at this point, entertain a motion relative to Village 27, if anyone is ready to make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take a stab at it.
Thank you.
I move to approve the master plan amendment resolution number 197 and forward a request of certification to the city council for the master plan amendment associated with PCN 12010 to change the land use designation from 3.7 acres from open space to four dwellings per acre and change the land use designation on approximately eight acres from four dwellings per acre to open space, adopting findings MP1 through MP4 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
I'll second that. All right.
Jackie wants to speak.
I want to speak.
One second here, Commissioner.
There, thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lean and a second by Commissioner Spurber. Any discussion?
I have, Tim, if we, now, we forward this on to the council, and what if they don't want to certify this? What happens? Does it come back to us?
Well, I think some of you may recall the last time that that situation arose, that the city council remanded it back to the planning commission and requested that you file a report with them-
Oh, that's right.
-detailing the reasons why you chose to do what you did. At that point in time, the report was then forwarded on to the city council for their consideration, and then at that point, they could choose to overturn your decision or certify it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item, we have a master plan amendment for Village 28. Anyone like to make a motion on that?
I'll give it a try.
Thank you.
I move to approve the master plan amendment resolution number 198 and forward a request of certification to the city council for the master plan amendment associated with PCN 12010 to change the land use designation on 10.9 acres from open space to four dwelling units per acre, Village 28, adopting the findings MP1 through MP4 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion?
Jack, try it.
I'll second.
Okay, second. We have a motion from Commissioner Sanders and a second from Commissioner Spurber. Any discussion?
Another question.
Yes.
When this goes to the council, is this...this isn't a public hearing item at that time, is it?
It is a public hearing.
It is. And will this go to the council in four weeks?
We're looking at...let's...let me...let's talk about noticing here for a minute, because I know that this is something that the audience may have a question about. The master plan amendments, the noticing requirements for the master plan amendments on the part of the city require us to publish a newspaper notice and place the item on the agenda. The reason why the residents were individually noticed in this particular case, number one was for the neighborhood meeting, so they were individually noticed by the applicant per NRS. And then, they also received an individual notice because of the handbook amendment, which follows the requirements for a zone change. And so, they also required an individual notice from the city. As we go forward to the City Council with master...with the master plan amendments, they may not get an individual notice. They probably won't get an individual notice. And so, we are looking at, I believe, September, late August, early September, I think, to have this go to the council. I'll take a quick look at the schedule and then let you know here in a moment.
It's like you read my mind. That was what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Tim, let me piggyback on that. I mean, once...if the city...where it comes out of the City Council, if they happen to approve it, it'd still have to go to Regional, correct?
Yes. In this particular case, we are looking at going to Regional prior to taking this to the City Council.
Right.
Just in the best interest of time and process. We are looking at making a submittal to the Regional Planning Agency in the near future in hopes that they will consider it in either July or August, whenever their next meeting is.
July.
July.
Yeah, July.
So, we'll hope to...we'll hope to get this to Regional by July for their consideration, and then we'll look at the City Council meeting. So, if it goes to Regional in July, we'll...
Right, in September.
Maybe Council in August. But let me get you that date.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other discussion on the item? Is there a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Those are the items under the 10A that were associated with the master plan amendment. We are now on 10B, a request for tentative approval of the amendment to the Wingfield Springs Plan Development Handbook. Tim, are you going to come back again for that?
Yes. Just to summarize very quickly.
Right.
This is the handbook amendment portion of the request. So, because of the withdrawal, we are not going to consider the changes to the land use table and map relative to Village 5A, 19C, and 20A. However, staff is requesting that you approve the amendments related to Village 27 and Villages 17A and 31.
Right.
As well as the changes to the setback requirements in the patio home and builder lot designation.
Period.
Yeah.
Is that the end of your presentation, Tim?
Yes, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Tim on the tentative approval? Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Very briefly, I'm in agreement with the recommendations of staff on the handbook amendments that I'm making, so I'm available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant? If not, this is a public hearing item as well. I have one person who indicated Beverly McDowell. She wished to speak on this item.
Beverly McDowell, 2808 Grossmont Drive. I actually live in a patio home. Everybody. It's 3126 square feet, two-story. And our whole block, that whole area of Richcrest, is, I think, what leave all patio homes. So, I really don't have objection to patio homes. I think people are thinking there's something else. But back to the issue of setbacks. I have a 12-foot setback in my backyard. Grossmont Drive, every home on Grossmont Drive faces the afternoon setting sun. And the City of Sparks has requirements from the planning staff. If you want to put a permanent structure up to keep your house cool in the summer, is 10-foot. So, I could put a 2-foot patio cover on. So, when you are considering setbacks, consider the sun exposure of homes. I put on a $6,000 retractable awning so that I get some relief in my back. But when the wind comes up, because we have the sensor, it retracts. So, I have no idea of what is all in 10B, but I do hope that you consider setbacks and what your regulations are, because, you know, we're supposed to be building energy-efficient homes and, you know, green homes and so forth. But that does not affect us living, you know, I think, everybody that lives up in Richcrest. So...
So, your backyard faces west?
Yes.
That what you're saying?
North.
Facing...
North.
Faces north.
But the sun sets right over the doctor's house there. I mean, it's on that hill, up by Singing Hills.
Right.
And it is just, you know, you have to close everything down, and, you know, you have views and all of that, and you lose all of that, plus the heat. I mean, the heat in the backyard is just unbelievable. So, unless you're going to reduce the fee you charge for a variance so that you could get a patio permanent structure, I'll take that into consideration.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a few additional items here. I'm not sure if the folks that signed up and we didn't call them, it seems to be for the master plan, but I'm going to call each person's name just in case we miss them. Mariana Grant. Robert Grant. Andrea Corbridge. Charlene Johnson. Brent Corbridge. Diana X-line. Okay, well, at least we didn't make anybody mad, or maybe we made them mad enough they laughed. I'm not sure which.
Poor story.
Oh, good. If...is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item, the approval...potential approval of the Wingfield Springs Plan Development Handbook?
I would, Mr. Chair.
Sure. At the conclusion of your presentation, if you would fill out another form, since this is a separate public hearing, I'd appreciate it.
May I give this under...
Thank you.
Just joking.
I wanted to address the setback issue. I'm not entirely certain that these patio homes are going to have attached garages, but assuming that they do, and you only have a 15-foot driveway out to the street, you're going to be interfering with the crosswalks. And, you know, you get a couple of those pickup trucks out there, they don't make it all the way. So, we're, you know, be very...you know, obviously, I'm not wild about the setbacks between the buildings or in the backyard. You have, I think somebody was talking about an eight-foot distance between the buildings as opposed to a 10-foot. That's going to be awfully noisy for those folks that live in there unless they put in some real heavy walls, which is probably not going to happen. But in any event, think very carefully about setbacks. I'm not saying not to have the patio homes, but if you're going to have an attached garage and an apron out there and a driveway, I don't...I think you're going to have some real problems with pedestrians, children, bicycles, all that kind of problem. Well, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. Someone else? Come on down, please.
Hi, how are you guys? I'm new to this procedure, so I have some questions. When we have the open forum and the public gets to come up and give you their opinion, I am confused at how quickly you guys are able to process that information and come up with an approval, especially when everything you've heard was negative. So, I'm confused by that. I'm concerned that you're not taking into consideration the issues of the water and the traffic and the homeowners' concerns out there. So, my...I guess my main concern right now is what decision-making happens and how...what goes on after this, because you guys all approved what we all assumed you wouldn't based on what we said and based on the information that you received. So, either there was a whole lot of extra stuff that went on before we got here, or, I mean, this is the Planning Commission. These are issues of planning. We're talking traffic. We're talking schools. We're talking water. We're talking homeowners' values. So, what is this all about? Why did we all show up if we weren't heard?
You know, wait, real quick. When we make a... You know, people, they talk about water. There's not enough water for development. There's not enough schools for our schoolchildren. Well, that's not up to us. That's up to the developer a lot of times. Ours is based on the laws related to planning, the NRS's. That's what we're going by. It isn't...we never had no private meeting before, no private meeting...
No, I'm assuming maybe you had more information than we got.
No, no, we didn't. We got the staff report, we got the laws related to planning, and it's like a judge. We're like a judge sitting in a court case. We get all the facts, we put them together. That's why there's six, seven of us here. You know? I might vote for it, and two might vote against it, and it's the majority...
That's why I was surprised that everybody voted for it. So, there's something I'm missing. But I do know that we've been out there for 10 years, and the grass in our common areas is really brown, and it's never been brown. The trees are dying. So, I know...I mean, I've been here for 20-some-odd years. I know we always scream about water, but we always find water. There's a water issue out there. I know, because my kids are in school out there, that Van Gorder's overcrowded, Shaw is overcrowded, and Spanish Miss High School are overcrowded. They are the biggest schools for their type of schools in Washoe County. And we're talking about putting a whole bunch more houses out there when housing values are falling, houses aren't selling. So, I really don't really know, like I said, why we came, because we all thought it was something different than it turned out to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that...yes?
My name's Steve Copper. I live at 6402 Copper Anne Drive. My question is, you just stated that you rule on the rules. That's how you passed your vote today. My question is, why are we here to express what our feelings are if you rule on the rules? Because what we said doesn't count. That's all I've got to say. Why even have a public hearing?
Anyone else that would like to speak?
Is there an answer to that question?
There is an answer to that question, and I think there is a difference between a public hearing where each of you get to express your opinion, and hopefully, it's taken into account by both the Planning Commission and the staff as we move forward. But there has been, up until tonight, lots and lots of work done by the staff and by members of the Planning Commission on our own to try to be ready for tonight's meeting. But it is focused on what the legal availability of the requests that are being made and whether staff and the Planning Commission feel like it is within the bounds of what the legal availability is to the applicant, whether it's in the best interest of trying to weigh the best interest of both residents, of which I am one in Wingfield Springs...
And the developer.
And the developer, and the laws affecting development. So, we're not...it's not that we're not hearing. There's long questions here, and each of these things that we potentially approve is just step one. There's several other public meetings, regional planning, City Council. When one of these projects, if it ever does come back, it'll come back to the Planning Commission for approval on some of the detailed stuff that we've talked about tonight. So, believe me, your arguments are heard, but ultimately, we have to rule based on what is in the laws relating to the plant...master plan amendment and tentative approval, and that's what we rely, to a large extent, on staff. Do you wish to speak? Yes, come on down. Please fill out a form once you complete, if you would.
I'm new and free to chat.
Yes, sorry. It's a separate item.
Okay. I'm still Kathy Green, and I still live at 6398...
I understand.
...to my support. I guess, at what point...maybe it's questions more. At what point in the process? A lot of the things that have been voiced weren't exactly in total opposition as much as getting them to conform to the other things immediately around, the other homes immediately around. At what point would something be considered, say, at taking this certain village or that certain village and saying, "Okay, well, the one off by Ray Del Ciero, if it ever comes back on, those are way bigger homes, or the ones around Old Waverly are way bigger homes, then maybe we should go with something larger than patio designations, minimum 4,000 square feet, or builder lots, minimum 6,000, when the ones off Old Waverly run all the way up to like a half acre or something similar to that." At what step in the process would that be considered? And I don't mean to be sarcastic, but if you guys have done all your research and everything, it almost sounds like the decision may have been made beforehand. I mean, you said to come and be prepared, but it kind of, I guess, sounds like and maybe feels like that we came, we voiced our opinion, we expressed our concerns, but because of your steps to be prepared, that maybe the decisions were already made? So, yes, let's just...
Thank you.
Okay. So, at what point would the changes...
Those are all...those kinds of things are all in the process, but many of the individual items that you talked about are much more likely to be covered when an actual development comes before us.
So, not in the actual zoning change from open space to four dwelling units, but when they submit a building?
I also would like to point out that the process...Tim Thompson from the planning staff announced that the applicant had withdrawn three items.
Right, right. 5A being one.
And the applicant announced that they had withdrawn three items. So, we didn't get to the issue where staff was suggesting denial of those three.
Right.
And so, that...so, you don't want to forget the fact that the process worked on the other three that happened to be withdrawn before they could have been denied.
Right. Okay.
So, the process worked.
So, 27 still, you know...
I understand.
Could have been for other...
Not everyone's going to agree with everything, but I'm just telling you that the process worked. It ended up with a withdrawal as opposed to a potential denial, but staff was...
Even if we look at the 27 that went through, you know, like the Hills...the Singing Hills homes, they are way bigger lots. The Waverly Court ones are way bigger lot. But it wasn't considered at this point to put in a different size thing. You say when they actually...
We'll see that again, and you'll have the opportunity again.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman. I understand that you have to rule by law and findings. Is that also the nature of the city? Is that also the nature of the city council?
Sir, you can come down and have part of...
Simple question, is it also, do you think that the city council will also rule?
Sir, if you want to come down and be part of the public hearing, we'd love to have you, but we need to keep the rules in order.
Mark List, residents of Hublin Vista. My question, sir, is, will the city council make the same decision based on that same finding and law, or will they take into account public opinion?
They are less constrained by public law than we are.
So, then, if there is a public hearing, public opinion might, in some way, shape, or form, influence the vote that is taken.
That's what it means to be a politician.
Then, may I ask, Mr. Thompson seemed to indicate that the public notice for the city council handling of this affair would be very limited. Is that, am I correct in that statement? I would heartily recommend that that be reversed, that in the absence of notification, the public may not be here, and the public seems to be quite concerned about this matter. I would think it would be an indication of the applicant's good faith to make sure sufficient notification is delivered, as well as the city, so the public opinion to politicians might impact the decision made at that point in time. I so humbly request.
Duly noted. Anyone else that chooses to speak on this item? Yes, sir? Please, please, complete a separate form. I know you both spoke before, but this is a separate item legally, and if you'd complete a form for me, I'd appreciate it.
I'd be glad to. Denny Jensen again. What I'd like to do is to just take a second and go over what the water situation is within Wingfield Springs. I'm not sure that you really have an understanding of it. This is not like some basic city area that relies 100% on Truckee Meadows Water to take care of us. We do use Truckee Meadows Water for our consumption, what goes into the house. But all of the common areas within Wingfield Springs is watered from water that we purchase from the Red Hawk Land Company. We are under a very stringent contract with them, and they have been good with us in supplying the amount of water that we have contracted, and in fact, we are over the contracted amount. And when we go over the contracted amount, we pay a penalty on that. And for the amount that we go over, what is really scary is if we get caught in a drought year, Red Hawk has a very expensive golf course to maintain, and they are not necessarily obligated to give us all of that water that we need. That water may very well go to the golf course. And at that point in time, we're sitting in a situation where all of our landscaping could just die. So, when we talk about water, it's not willy-nilly where you think, oh, it's simple. I don't believe that the typical water study that the commission does is adequate to consider what goes on within Wingfield Springs. And I position to you that that study has not been done and needs to be done before you take action on this. You're making a decision right now in the blind. I don't think any one of you on the panel, except possibly Mr. Vols, because you live there, understands that situation. So, I ask you to go and educate yourselves and understand just how vulnerable we are as a community. And by adding all of this property, we are taking again from that same water. So, if we're going to approve this, then one of the triggers, and a trigger, in my opinion, is really we're looking at you, the commission, to set the triggers. It's not on the developer. Set the trigger that they need to supply us through contract the additional water required for those properties, and not at a penalty.
So, Denny, does that water come from the ore ditch?
From which?
From the ore ditch.
Yes.
So, that...
Just part of it. Part of it.
Let's keep it down to the public meeting here.
Is that water from the ore ditch? When they turn it on, it runs approximately 125 days?
I don't know the length and time.
It was turned on May 9th, and as of May 9th, it'll run 125 days, and then that's it.
Yeah. I'm not sure. We've got one person that focuses 100% on water.
We're still in the public hearing, and you are over your time, but thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else that'd like to speak as part of the public hearing? If not, I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission.
Yes. Let's get right back into that section about water. I don't know who we ought to have staff talk to. Can you maybe, let's talk about the water, and obviously, everybody says, you know, they know where their other water comes from for their house, but we're talking in these common areas and those kind of things. You know, what's required, what is given, what... Could you explain this?
It's a private issue. With the development of Wingfield Springs, as you have reviewed this handbook, there are requirements to provide common open space, or, I'm sorry, common areas that are landscaped and irrigated. The nature of that, is that as a final map is processed, the developer builds the development, landscapes, provides water for that landscaping, and then at some point, it is turned over to the HOA. The city's involvement has been to ensure that the plans we receive include what's required in the handbook. I am aware of some bankruptcies by developers where common areas weren't finished. We have tried to work with that issue from time to time. There is concept of triggers. The city's obligation, in my opinion, is to make sure that the elements that are required in the handbook come with those subdivisions. I cannot speak to how the irrigation systems were created. We do review the landscaping plans to make sure that the pipes and, you know, that they will be irrigated. The source of the water was not our concern. Under NRS, they're required to deliver water rights with the homes for domestic use. That's about what I know.
Well, it still bothers me what they're talking about, the domestic, there isn't a problem here. We're talking about the water and whether there's enough water to do these landscaping, do these areas in the thing, and it sounds like there's a problem. Is it something the city doesn't get involved with?
To the best of my knowledge, Commissioner Schuber, the agreement is a private agreement between Red Hawk Land or one entity and the HOA, as far as supplying water for the common areas. I do not believe the city is party to this.
Right. Would you like to speak on this? No, no, not you. No, no, I'm trying to get to the middle, figure out this thing. Randy? Randy Walters?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'll go back in history, because I know probably more about the history of it than even the people that are in the audience. The common areas currently in Wingfield Springs use reclaimed water. They also use Turkey River water that's brought in through the ore ditch, as does the golf course. There's a variety of sources of this water. The water, at the time a development occurs, has to be dedicated for domestic use, which you know. The landscaping also has to have water rights allocated to it. Typically, it's going to be reclaimed water. That's the best use of reclaimed water in that region. There's a lot of common areas that are not unreclaimed in Wingfield Springs, because they were built before reclaimed water was even available to Spanish Springs. Keep in mind, we're talking history from the standpoint of when water was available. So, there is a lot of common areas that are currently being served by someone through domestic supplies. Keep in mind that every lot that's developed, all the landscaping that's on that lot is fed from Turkey River water. Right. I don't think the issue has anything to do with supply, because there's plenty of reclaimed water available at a price. I think the issue is the price of the water. And quite frankly, reclaimed is rather expensive. Reclaim comes through the city's system, it has to be allocated, paid for, et cetera, as a function of that, and that's all part of the agreement that they have. There is a private agreement, I'm not familiar with the private agreement, I don't really know what the details of it are between Red Hawk Land and the HOA. That's something I don't know anything about. So, I can't really answer those questions. But it sounds to me, from the testimony, that we're talking about the price of water, not necessarily the availability of it. That's my two cents, Rick.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Thank you very much. I close the public hearing. Bring it back to the Planning Commission. We have a discussion on the... Tim, are you back here, and would you like to speak for a bit?
Yes, sir. Where to start? Where to start? The golf, the three golf holes that are located in the foothills, completely different plan development. It's not a part of this development, it's in another plan development, and I think we're well aware of the situation that exists out there. But I, again, don't think that has any bearing on what we're here to talk about tonight. The Wingfield Springs handbook allows for a maximum unit count of 2,564 lots. Even with the addition of these approved villages, or of these proposed villages, even the villages that have been withdrawn, the applicant was still below that by at least more than 100. My count was 91 lots, if you included all of the villages between, including 5A and 19C and 28, was an additional 91 lots. What I can tell you, and I think that this was touched on a bit earlier, is that all of the infrastructure was adequate or is adequate to serve that number of units. So, when it comes to the road network and the circulation and all of the infrastructure, it's adequate to serve the number of units that are there, and even were proposed in full in this amendment. And so, from the city's standpoint, that the traffic is really a non-issue. I know that there are people that have a different opinion. I know that people live this every day, but based on the standards and the adopted levels of service that we have, the infrastructure is adequate. When it comes to the schools, what happens is, when the city receives an application such as this, it gets sent over to the school district for comment. In many cases, we don't receive comments back at this level. A lot of times, that comment comes when we see a tentative map. I can tell you that the school district does not have a facilities plan. I can say that over the years that we have formed a good relationship with the school district, and I think we work more closely today than we did maybe 10, 12, 15 years ago. And so, you know, they have access to our land use maps, they have access to these handbooks, they have the ability to do the analysis to ensure that the school infrastructure is adequate to serve the number of residents that are proposed. I know that there is some redistricting going on. I have been playing phone tag with a representative of the school district to talk in detail more about this proposal and alert them to what's happening if they should have not have received an application, which I don't know why they wouldn't have, but just to get in touch with them and let them know that there is a concern. I've heard this concern from many residents, and so, I feel like I'm obligated to follow up with the school district and make sure that we're talking, that we're on the same page, and that they're aware of the concerns that I'm hearing relative to these changes, so that the school district can do what they need to do when it comes to the process of Lot of talk about triggers for certain improvements. Wingfield Springs Plan Development approved in the mid-1990s, this is one of the first plan developments. I can say that we've learned a lot in the last 15 to 20 years when it comes to plan developments. The triggers that I think folks are looking for that would ensure that improvements happened at a certain interval, those aren't necessarily in the Wingfield Springs handbook, as maybe they are in a handbook that was reviewed and approved within the last few years. We have done, we've tried to do a good job of looking at what improvements are necessary and when the appropriate timing of those improvements need to be made. And I can tell you, in the case of Pioneer Meadows, for example, that the construction of the parks are based on number of lots recorded within certain phases, and they don't get additional approvals until the park's constructed. We don't have that here in this handbook. We are well aware of the Silverton Shores Park. I can tell you that staff continues to look into that, both in conjunction with our Parks and Recreation Department, as well as the City Attorney's Office, and, you know, we will continue to look into whatever the legal obligation is of the developer to construct that park. I think that a lot of folks may be under the impression that if this is approved, development starts immediately, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the developer, but in my conversations, I'm under the impression that the applicant is looking to, is looking at these properties that they believe are underutilized, and looking at the development potential. I don't believe they have a plan for what we're talking about, per se. They may have ideas, I'm not sure they have a firm plan. I think that as we move forward, that the developer will take a much closer look at these pieces of property, and they'll have to make a business decision as far as whether it's feasible to develop the property, given the constraints, the requirements, the parameters. What was just discussed related to water, a tentative map is approved with conditions that sufficient water rights be dedicated to serve those number of units. The final map will not be signed by the water authority until there are water rights. There's no building permit issued until there is a will-serv letter stating that the water authority will provide water service. So, when it comes to water and water service and the dedication of water rights, there are some checks and balances in place to ensure that sufficient water rights are dedicated and that the water purveyor can in fact serve the development. Village 17A, which is the commercial piece there adjacent to the golf club maintenance facility, 14 lots, that's what it's proposed for. Patio homes in general have a height limitation of 30 feet or two stories. And I think it's probably best to just go ahead and read from this. Patio homes are smaller individual lots which encourage unit clustering, encourage, not required. Patio home parcels will form more compact neighborhoods where zero lot line and other innovative siding techniques are encouraged. Patio home parcels must meet building code requirements for fire and safety. The permitted uses in the patio home designation, and I think that there may be some confusion between a patio home product versus the patio home designation. The permitted uses in the patio home designation, single-family dwellings of a permanent nature, there's some allowance for recreational facilities for the sole use of the residents in the immediate neighborhood, temporary sales offices and model homes, in-home childcare, and accessory structures. So, as you can see, the list of allowed uses is very small when it comes to patio homes. You're essentially limited to the single-family residential. As we get into the lot characteristics, the minimum lot size is 4,000 square feet. Some of the changes, for example, the applicant is asking to reduce the front yard setback to a garage. I think someone earlier mentioned 15 feet. The requirement right now is 20 feet from the front property line to the garage, and the applicant is asking to reduce that to 18 feet. In looking at that specific proposal, it is not uncommon in the city of Sparks for a 4,000-square-foot product to have an 18-foot... it is not uncommon in the city of Sparks for a 4,000-square-foot product to have an 18-foot setback to, from the garage to the front property line. Not uncommon. And based on that, staff believes that it's appropriate for the developer to ask for that, and that's why we supported it. I want to make it also clear. Again, there's been a little bit of discussion about Village 30, and it's not on the table tonight. But I want to make it clear that there is a difference between the golf cottage designation and the patio home designation. And so in the case of Village 30, the developer is looking at developing that property under the golf cottage designation, under the standards within the golf cottage design standards. However, the applicant, the product type that they are looking at for Village 30 is a more compact patio home type of product where you have smaller setbacks. Smaller lots, smaller setbacks, more compact. And so I think it's important to maybe clarify that. And I got the impression that there might have been some confusion related to that. You know, there is actually a provision in the handbook that does allow for cluster court homes. And there is, there is an area designated for that, and they've been constructed. I also think there may be some confusion regarding Village 27. Village 27 and the changes proposed with Village 27. The additional units that the applicant is seeking are builder lot designations, not patio homes, but builder lot. That is the same designation that currently exists on Village 27. They are not proposing to change that. It is, it is consistent. Another reason why staff believed that we could support that was because there was some consistency in the, in the, in the housing type, or at least the designation that was proposed by the applicant. Not exactly sure what the comment was related to, to the Pioneer Meadows development. And I don't know if you want us to attempt to answer that. But, you know, I think in conclusion, you know, as a staff, we are in the unique position to where we, at some level and at some degree, we represent the interests of the developer, of the residents, of the city, and of the community as a whole. And so we have to, we have to consider an array of viewpoints. I think the neighborhood meeting on Monday was important. I think that the input that was gathered during that meeting has led to the applicant possibly reconsidering what they are choosing to move forward with. I don't want folks to leave here tonight and to think that they weren't heard. You know, you know, the public process is an important part of this process. And, you know, I think as the applicant alluded to earlier, we've been working on this for a number of months now to get us to this point. And I think from the staff's perspective, we have done the very best job that we could do and made the appropriate recommendations based on all the factors to be considered and given all of the viewpoints that we have to consider. And so with that, I'll conclude and answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? If not, we are on the request for a tentative approval of the amendments to Wingfield Springs Plan Development with some changes that resulted from the withdrawals. So is someone in position to make a motion?
I am, once I get a pair of glasses on.
Why don't, why don't we let Commissioner Lean take a crack at it?
Well, if he's ready, he can have it.
He seems ready.
He's got the glasses on.
He's kind of shaky.
I moved forward a recommendation for tentative approval of a request for an amendment to the Wingfield Springs Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 12010 to approve the proposed changes to the land use table and map for Villages 17A, 27, 31, and the proposed changes to the setbacks with the patio homes, patio home and builder lot designations based on findings PD-1 through PD-21. The tentative approval includes that the applicant shall file for a final approval of the plan development within one year from the date of the city council granting tentative approval of the Plan Development Handbook. Due to the nature of the tentative plan development, the planning commission does not recommend that the city council require a bond at this time, as stated in NRS 278A 490.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lean and a second by Commissioner Peterson to forward the recommendation of tentative approval as read. Any discussion?
Yeah, Tim, there's a little bit of talk about...
There's a little bit of talk about the backyard and the patio covers and different things.
Yes.
Can you discuss a little bit about that on, were there any backyard setbacks changes? I don't think so.
There were to the patio home designation. The proposal was to reduce the rear setback from 10 feet to eight. In talking with the developer, I think that they were looking for some additional flexibility, although they didn't believe that in the majority of cases that they would actually have a setback of less than 10 or 12 feet. That being said, Commissioner, I think the comment related to the patio covers is valid. On these smaller lot products, it does become more challenging for folks to install patio covers or accessory structures, given the zoning code requirements. When you talk about a patio cover, a structure that is attached to the house, the zoning code does not permit a patio cover to come within more than 10 feet of that rear property line. And, and so I think as, as the speaker said, you know, she has a, you know, 12-foot rear yard, so she can have a two-foot patio cover. And that's exactly right. When it comes to accessory structures, I think that we've been lenient in that, you know, what is an accessory structure? And so I think that we've taken the approach that if you have a detached structure that is less than 120 square feet, that it can be located anywhere on the rear inside property line, behind the rear of the house, where it's not attached. Anytime you have a structure like that that is actually greater than 120 square feet, there's another separation requirement where you have to maintain 10 feet between that structure and the house. And so that tends to have an impact as well on what folks can do. But if it's 120 square feet or less, there is some flexibility to do an independent, a freestanding structure that would help to mitigate that concern. But it is, it is a challenge. We've, this is not the first time that we've had this concern. I can tell you that the Kylie Ranch South development, the cluster homes on the northwest corner of Los Altos and Sparks is, we've had similar issues just because of the nature of that development, the lot sizes, the configuration, and the setbacks. It's, there are instances where that is problematic. Not to say that there isn't a workaround.
Thank you. Any other discussion items? If not, we'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. We are at the conclusion, we have completed 10A and B. And we are on item 13, public comment. So any members of the public that wish to comment for up to three minutes on, this has to be on an item that does not, that has not appeared on the agenda. Not, not something that's on the agenda. Sorry, Bill, if that's what you had in mind.
William Marine here from Sparks. Let me just clarify for the water issue. I served on the committee that did, that worked on this water issue when we first moved. One, there are two wells on, at Wingfield Springs, plus we do get ordage water. That's what we use for the common areas. We do not use city water. Now, they pumped in some reclaimed water for a park, which is something else you all ought to take up at some time or another, why they don't complete that park. But in any event, you have a young lady here who owns this water. Harvey Whitmore owned the water rights, and, and we are using his water rights and paying him for it. So when you, you know, if you think we've got water from other sources, yeah, we can buy it from the city, but we get it from Harvey and we pay Harvey. So we have, the homeowners do not have any control. And by the way, the common areas are under the control of the homeowners association. They're the ones that put the sprinklers on. And they're the ones that cut the grass and whatever. So let's just be aware that the water situation, that was the reason I brought it up. We're already over our allocated amount. And so you add more common area and you add more houses and more maintenance to be done. We're, the homeowners there are going to be in trouble. Thank you very much. I'll fill out another form.
Not required, I think probably not. We'll give you an excuse, Bill.
Yeah. You have the owner of the water sitting right here. You can ask her about it if you want to.
Well, this is a public comment item. And unless the person sitting in front wants to be, make a public comment, that's the item we're on. Anyone else in the public that would like to speak for three minutes on any item that is not on the agenda?
As far as the school, Tim commented that the school district was made known. The school district was apparently made known. However, the rezoning committee, they just met Tuesday night. They only found out just prior to the meeting. UNR has a projected growth study for them, which they did so they could decide the rezoning. None of this, none of this was considered in the projected, well, anything that was already master planned was. But any of the new stuff was not considered in that projected growth for the, the school system. And you can say, well, we can tell them about it and then they can whatever. But the problem is, this area is to the point where we need another elementary school at the tune of 21 million. There's not 21 million for another school. There's not even the money for the mobiles or the hammerheads they're talking about to try to solve these issues as far as the overcrowding. So you can let them know, but that, all that does is just add to the, their existing problem that they already have. Where to put the kids? When the kids are all clumped, mainly around Spanish Springs and Van Gorder, and you have these other schools over here which are underused, but then you have to, you know, what kids do you take? And how do you bus them? And so adding new homes to that clumped area, you know, yes, they're now going to try to take those in. I did go to the zoning meeting for the school to be sure that they were taking that into consideration before their final recommendations, but, and they had just gotten word on Tuesday. So, but you just, you know, you add to an existing problem by adding, you know, the additional.
Thank you.
You know, you can tell them, but if they don't have anywhere to put the ones they've got, they still won't have anywhere to put the new ones.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public like to comment for up to three minutes on any item not on the agenda? If not, I'll close the public comment. Any comments from the commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're done. Thank you all.